Hi, good evening. We're going to call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the meeting agenda? Ms. Downey, is there a second? Ms. Hirsch? All those in favor of approving the meeting agenda? Ms. Kowalski? Alright, that passes 7-0. Mr. Scher absent. Next up is the consent agenda. Can we motion to approve the consent agenda? Ms. Downey, is there a second? Ms. Stowe? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda? That's a 7-0. Thank you. Alright, so the next up is the school. Welcome, Mr. Feinstein.
Thanks for that round of applause. I appreciate it. So, good evening, Chairman Bernstein, members of the board, Dr. Jones and Cabinet, and all the audience. Welcome to THE Western Middle School. I realize that very few of you today, well, actually, none of you today, can hear me speak. But it's my mic and it's my school, so you have to put up with me for at least a few minutes. Before I start, I just want to introduce a few people. Lucas, you're the senior class president, right?
Yes.
Where'd you go to middle school?
I came to Western.
Yeah, you did. And Zane, you're like the student body president, right?
Oh, yeah.
And where'd you go to middle school?
Westside.
Yeah, you did. I'm going to get a T-shirt banner next year. So, I should probably drop the mic right now, as there is no better endorsement for our school than these two fine gentlemen. But there are a few things I need to share, and like I said, it is my mic. So, when I avoid these board meetings, like I avoid Broccoli, I haven't seen you since you allowed us to adopt the Avid Schoolwide magnet theme about a year ago. So, I figure this would be a good opportunity to provide you with an update on both the work and the results. So, while on paper, Avid Schoolwide is a new theme for us, Avid is what we have been doing for years. It has permeated everything from our mission statement, to our grading practices, to our approach to discipline, to classroom instruction. As we understand that kids need to be explicitly taught executive functioning skills, we continue to run with a one binder organizational system and are now director of energy towards focused note-taking. In the classrooms, all students are using a common reading strategy to attack nonfiction texts in a systemic way across content areas. Also this year, there's been an emphasis on questioning, using customs level of thinking to add rigor to questions being asked and answered. So, for example, rather than asking kids to spit out the causes of the Revolutionary War, we now pose questions such as, was this war inevitable? Students use a variety of Avid strategies, such as philosophical chairs or a Socratic seminar, to debate and explore questions such as these in all disciplines. I think the one new addition that is reaping the most benefits for our students, though, and likely their least favorite, is our progress monitoring system. So, every couple of days, students are provided time to check asking, record their grades and missing assignments, and then set goals or create a plan of attack to address any deficiencies. And every eight days, this plan and this sheet is emailed home to the parents and to the teachers and to the guidance council and, if appropriate, to a coach. So, we know how your child is doing, the child knows how they're doing, and the parent knows how they're doing, all the time. You can run, you cannot hide. So, when you put the Avid system into the hands of the most dedicated, caring, and professional staff I've ever worked with, you get results. While your child is much more than a scorer on a standardized test, Western is much more than a collection of those student scores. That being said, these results do tell a story. In terms of absolute scores, Western has lead propped over 60 middle schools, that's six O middle schools, in the past five years. We are now the number one scoring true public school in the state with a free reduced lunch population over 40%. No school who scores better than us looks like us. In fact, we outscore many schools who have given up diversity, as we put that in the back of the room. This growth process economic, racial, and language lines. It has resulted in a steady but significant reduction in the poverty achievement gap each of the past five years. Currently, in math, the state index gap of kids in poverty at Western is 12.5, the state average is 22.3, we're almost half of that. And in reading our numbers, even more impressive, our gap wise is just 4.9, the state average is 16.5. Just five years ago, our achievement gap exceeded that of the states. It is also important to note, we have closed this gap by raising scores for all kids and having an increase in our number of specialized students, ELL population, and students who qualify for free reduced lunch. But I want to be clear, the work we're doing at Western does not, does much more than simply service our needy as children. Avid is good for all kids, which is why we pushed for this as our theme. Yes, we have enjoyed a significant decrease in the percentage of students scoring at the lowest level on the SBA, but we have seen equally sharp rise in the percentage scoring at the highest levels at the same time. This is due to the work of our outstanding staff, the Avid system, so all children can serve us at Western. Others have begun to take note. We are a magnet school with the idea that we will draw students not fortunate enough to attend one of our feeder elementary schools. We're doing just that. As of yesterday, we had 25 magnet applications for Western. Twenty of which are for our rising sixth grade class. This will bring our total for the 2021 school year to 45 magnet students. And as we remind you guys, in our previous team, we had a total of four magnet students. And one was my own kid, so here's your account. So, we want to thank you for your continued support of Avid Schoolwide. It's made a difference in the lives of kids. So, finally, a word about our field. I suspect that many in this crowd tonight are here to voice your thoughts and how to best surface the fields at Central. I want to remind all of you that your debate is a luxury we at Western do not enjoy. We are now in our fourth year, fourth year of not having our fields open. At the glacial pace with which this is moving through the system, I fear that our fields, whenever opened, might be named the Gordon Ross Memorial Fields. I was really hoping to see the kids play on the fields. I did not, did not want to be part of this landfill. But in all seriousness, for three-plus years, we have done what has been asked and have allowed the process to unfold without interference. Enough. Our kids deserve better. I was encouraged by the discussion that took place at the board meeting a few weeks back. I could hear a sense of urgency to finally get this work done. As we debate the high school and Central, both of whom who have had access to their fields this entire time, I ask you to remember the cohorts of kids at Western who have never sat foot on home turf. Thank you and enjoy your meeting.
Thank you, Gordon. You always get the applause on the back end. Yeah, that works. It does. Alright, next up, we're going to go to our public hearing portion. We'll start with the GHS student government.
Good evening, members of the board, the cabinet, Superintendent Jones, and community members. I'm Lucas Kazianis. I'm the senior class president at Greenwich High School. Let me first say that I'm thrilled to be back here at Western, of which I am a proud alumnus, and so is Zane. So, thank you to Mr. Feinstein and the faculty at Western for having us and for running the best middle school in town. So, let me begin with a student government update. In March, we'll be hosting a club spotlight week, where student groups will have the opportunity to apply to sponsor a day of the week. We're letting them put together their own proposals for what that will exactly entail, but we're expecting to have a diverse array of exciting ideas and activities to work with. I have also been leading a policy proposal in a student government subcommittee aimed at optimizing GHS's graduation ceremony for the classes of 2024 and beyond to comply with input we've been hearing from students. Through extensive discussions with many students through student government and through a club I run, we found that students are dissatisfied with who is speaking at their graduation. They do not want to hear speeches that are often repetitive from as many class salutatorians as they usually do, but they still want to recognize their classmates' academic achievements. Our proposal will cause a top-ranked group of students to be recognized at the ceremony, but would only delegate speeches to one valedictorian and one salutatorian. This also maintains the accuracy of the titles, which are traditionally awarded to only the first and second ranked students in the class. We're meeting with Administrator Sue to refine the proposal and hope to have it in front of the student government representative bodies shortly. And we're also exploring potential ways to address teacher grading disparities, which I'll have updates on in later months. Finally, this is the last time I will see you all before our SRO senior show on Thursday, March 5th and Friday, March 6th. Rehearsals have been underway since before February break, and I, for one, am very pleased with my progress in learning the TikTok dances that the show demands. We have memorable skits, a dynamic roster of musicians, including me on piano, and an amazing class spirit that you'll be able to feel from the audience. So, please, support the senior class and come see SRO. Thank you, that's all I have this month, and please welcome Student Body President Zane Carter.
Thank you very much, Lucas. Mr. Chairman, Dr. Jones, members of the board, administrators, parents, cabinet, and pioneering citizens of Greenwich. Yeah, you like pioneering? Good evening and welcome. I am Zane Carter, the student body president of Greenwich High School, and it is good to be back home at Western. I'd like to start by briefly notifying the greater Greenwich community on the very persistent issue of trash in the student center. For those of you who are unfamiliar with the situation, allow me to fill you in. The student center is the massive concourse at the high school that all the houses are connected to, and every day from 11:19 a.m. to 12:49 p.m., students from all around the school travel to the student center in four different waves to eat lunch, with a 10-minute overlap period in between waves. And while many students understand what it means to clean up after yourself, a large amount of students do not. And that large amount of students will eat their lunch and then push their plastic plates into the middle of the table and then just leave it there and go about on their business. And so, as you might imagine, the result of that happening on a daily basis is an incredibly dirty student center, which is really surprising considering all of the trash cannons that are scattered around. In fact, the student, the issue is so persistent that I was able to Google "student center trash" and found an article on Greenwich Times from five years ago regarding the issue as the first result of that search. And while I have my own would-be solutions, like removing all of the tables for a day and seeing what would happen, or just having the custodians just not clean up the trash, I think the overall issue of trash warrants a further discussion on a larger scale about respect for schools and the overall community. The second point that I'd like to bring up is with regards to the achievement of a goal within our vision of the graduate, the last academic capacity refers to students being able to generate innovative, creative ideas and products. And in all honesty, I think we have a district have a bit of work to do on that account. While innovation is certainly a great focus in earlier years, by the time students are seniors at the high school, the focus shifts to memorization and application, which is not necessarily an invention. If curriculum is solely focused on learning about what has already been done in a particular field, then there is no room for students to be given the space and time to develop their own new and original ideas, and that diminishes their natural entrepreneurial spirit. As we're seeing with the computer science course proposal tonight, ambitious students are suddenly plowing through the available coursework earlier and earlier, and as a result, they're running out of courses to take as upperclassmen. So, perhaps then, these students should be offered an innovation-driven seminar course, where they can put their coding skills to use trying to create an original program for real-world application as an option for what they could be taking after completing the highest level class in that subject. The emphasis then in that example is not on regurgitating information, but instead on using what was learned to create something truly authentic through an entrepreneurial lens. If students fail in their pursuit to create that program, then that's okay. In fact, it should be encouraged. Students should learn that as potential young entrepreneurs, failure is a part of the learning process. It shouldn't be avoided or discouraged with bad grades. The point is, though, that the student would have the opportunity to learn through experience, which is something that I think curriculum now currently lacks. As valuable as it is to learn through the acquisition of knowledge from textbooks, it is equally as important to practice work-based learning as a means to boost employability and student ambition. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, the next speaker is Carol Sutton from the GEA.
Good evening, Principal Feinstein, Chairman Bernstein, and board members. Hello, Megan. Superintendent Jones and Cabinet and members of the community, and especially members of the Greenwich Education Association who are here today. I'm proud to represent these individuals and a total of 900 members of the association. Starting on a positive note, since your last meeting, six Greenwich schools were recognized as schools of distinction by the state of Connecticut. GEA is proud of all of our schools, but especially proud of North Myannis, Glenville, Julian Curtis, North Street, Parkway, and Riverside. They were recognized for progress, for performance, and also for growth, and we're very proud and congratulations to all. Also, Mr. Feinstein, congratulations on the progress of your Avid program here at Western. It's really remarkable, and thanks to your leadership. So, this evening, I will speak on one agenda item. The special education report before you this evening asks and answers the question, is Greenwich providing the federal IDEA services to students with disabilities that are compliant with requirements, effective in meeting the requirements, efficient in the delivery of services, and sufficient quality to meet the individual needs of each student? The packet presented before you supports and puts out a resounding yes. Yet, when teachers speak freely, the picture is drastically different. One teacher said, quote, "We have outstanding staff working in the special education department, but we are understaffed." Most days, it feels like you're being sent to sea in a leaky boat and then being punished for not bailing fast enough. That the boat floats at all is astonishing, considering that in the past five years, the number of students receiving special education services has gone up by 200. Yet, only two additional teachers and 3.3 additional instructional aides have been added to the head count. This does not add up. It cannot add up to compliant, effective, and efficient delivery of services, despite and regardless of the tremendous professional efforts of everyone involved, including special education teachers, regular education teachers, administrators, all the way up to the office of Mary Ford, instructional aides, and of course, the students themselves. The special education department is understaffed. It is stretched thin, and the impact of this is felt by every student and every teacher in every classroom in this great district. But this is not just about special education. In addition to greater numbers of identified students requiring services, kids without IEPs, without 504s, are walking into school each day with social, emotional, psychological, psychiatric, and behavioral issues that are new in scope and in volume, and they are often not diagnosed or classified for extra services of any kind or extra support. This is the reality all over town. It is not an Eastside, Westside, Backcountry, or Central Greenwich issue, but rather, a unifying challenge for our entire community. If you ask them, teachers from all levels will tell you that the classroom of today is not the same as it was 10 years ago. Today, there are instances of dysregulated behavior and disrupted learning and emotional stress occurring daily. This new reality has not and cannot be absorbed with budget caps of 2% per year and flat staffing year over year. This is the reality of the past decade of budget cycles. This does not add up either, and it is unsustainable. And in fact, yesterday, the budget was frozen for this school year. No more supplies, no advance warning. Yes, teachers are literally or metaphorically sobbing in the parking lot because they're having a hard time doing the one thing that matters most to them, and that is meeting the needs of the students and guiding them to success. During the public hearing this evening, three GEA members, Barbara Friedman from Greenwich High School, Andrea Abbott from North Street School, and Maria Yucich from Central Middle School, will share more of the teacher perspective. When they speak, they're speaking as representatives of the association, not as individuals. So, as always, I thank you very much for the opportunity to speak, and we are looking forward to the discussion, to the hearing, and to the rest of the meeting. Thank you.
Next up is PTA Council.
Good evening, Superintendent Jones, Principal Feinstein, Chairman Bernstein, members of the board, cabinet, and community. My name is Cricket Diamond, and I am the president of Greenwich PTA Council. We hope you all had a productive and restful break and have returned with energy and enthusiasm. Tonight, we would like to comment on a few agenda items and non-agenda items and also give you a sense of the exciting committee work that is being done by council committees. To turf or not to turf, you will vote this evening on the fields for Central Middle School. While the CMS PTA has not taken an official vote regarding the fields, we know that the PTA has heard from many parents and staff members on both sides of the issue. The CMS PTA as an entity cannot choose a side in this matter as the community is extremely divided. They have encouraged all to come to the meeting this evening to express their thoughts. The ironic thing, as Gordon mentioned earlier, about this location is that Western Middle School has not had a field for the children to play on for four years. From what I hear from the parents here, they would just like a field, any kind of field. Regarding the special education program report presented tonight, PTA Council underscores many of the issues presented by Ms. Ford. We are concerned with large numbers of students being referred to special education because of trouble with attention and behavior. While the data is not available to determine actual numbers, the high percentage of reading referrals for middle and high school students is extremely worrisome. Is there a reason these issues were not detected earlier? Also, students are being referred for math at a rising rate, but our district has no math intervention in place similar to Orton-Gilliam. We support researching the staffing model for successful learning. Focus and funding should be directed to special education, and this includes infrastructure and training, as well as parent communication. Council supports the Board of Education request for an in-depth review of special education services in Greenwich to be completed during the 2021 school year. We look forward to the review, as well as the work of the Key to Add devising seminar task force, which will shed light on areas of concern with special education in Greenwich. Following up from the earlier screen time report from last month, PTA Council urges the board and the administration to consider a more holistic view of digital learning and the many concerns that have been raised by parents, including health aspects relating to eyes, posture, social development and brain development, demonstration of efficacy, misuse of iPads and laptops, lack of screen time guidelines, and parental and teacher monitoring tools, and availability of alternative learning paths. Given the scarcity of conclusive research in many of these areas, it is easy to argue that this is an experiment in digital learning. As such, parents should be provided with frequent updates about the overall digital learning picture and about their specific student. We implore you to provide future updates addressing all aspects of this topic. Before we close, we wanted to provide a quick update on PTA Council committee efforts. PTA coordinates and leads over 14 committees comprised of parents, teachers, and administration from across the district. These committees seek to harness the energy and best practices to positively enrich and benefit our children. Tonight, we will highlight just a few of the many efforts, but what unites them all is the dedication of the countless individuals who work side by side on behalf of the students. The wellness committee has made great strides in recommending healthy school food choices with many more fresh and prepared onsite options available. Healthier eating leads to healthier children and better learning. In addition, they are focusing on posture awareness, as well as an anti-vaping awareness, too. The afters committee is helping PTAs of elementary schools across the district offer after and before school enrichment in areas from soccer to Spanish to science for thousands of students. Tasked with coordinating across all of the schools, our curriculum enrichment committee is working to implement high-quality arts and education programming provided by the best external organizations available to our students. The committee's mission is to support, engage, and deepen the curricular goals and objectives and priorities brought to our students from the district. The ALP2E special education committees have been ensuring support for and focus on important issues. They have sponsored speaker series and parent education meetings, and they have worked with administrators on focused goals. Great momentum and great impact. We look forward to sharing many more examples of impact in future meetings. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. So, we are up to our community comment portion. We've got 30 speakers signed up. Each speaker gets three minutes. I don't know if any of you are math majors, but it's a lot of speakers here, Brian. We have a, obviously, a heavy agenda that we want to get to. What I would ask is a couple of things. One, please be respectful in your comments. Two, if somebody said something that you want to say, you can get up and say, thank you, somebody already said it, and help us get the meeting moving, because we really do want to get to the discussion portion. We also want to hear from you. So, with that, I'll start with Barbara Friedman, followed by Andrea Abbott.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Barbara Friedman. Thank you, Board of Education, for this opportunity, and thank you, GEA, for inviting me to participate and speak on behalf of my colleagues. I teach electronic music composition and studio production at the high school, an internationally recognized program. I have a PhD in learning technologies, and I am an Oxford University Press bestselling author. After teaching for 24 years, I have considerable training and experience working with many kinds of students, including honors and AP students, and approximately 20% of my students have a variety of special needs. Last fall, the GEA started looking at special education and its impact on our schools. I freely admit that I am no expert on elementary education, but what I have learned from my elementary colleagues in the last five months has shocked me. I didn't know what an evacuation was. In my wildest dreams, I could not imagine that elementary teachers need to empty or evacuate a classroom because of a student's emotional or physical breakdown. A single teacher can't serve that student alone while serving all the others. I learned in the past two years, there were over 1,000 evacuations and major disruptions of instruction in our elementary schools. How many hours have lost to... How many hours of lost instructions does that represent, not to mention the emotional anguish for all our students? I was also shocked to learn that unwanted physical contact by students and assaults on my colleagues occur regularly. I saw the wounds, including bruises, scratches, and bites. In our survey of the school, well over 1,000 hours of mandated service hours were not and are not provided because special education teachers are stretched too thin. One teacher reported, quote, "The specific accommodation required on my caseload are impossible to implement in any given week. There are not enough hours in the day." Quite simply, this district fails to provide mandated service hours to our students. And finally, most shocking is that my colleagues are often afraid to speak up on these issues. In every school, faculty and staff reported they were either explicitly or implicitly discouraged from speaking up. They are afraid that the administration will somehow retaliate against them for speaking the truth and standing up for their students. In fact, I'm speaking tonight because my elementary colleagues are afraid to speak about these issues. Unaddressed issues do not solve themselves, they fester. After years of budget cuts and trying to solve this problem through fancy calculations on a spreadsheet, the number of underserved students has grown exponentially. In closing, my biggest takeaway is that my elementary colleagues are remarkable to accomplish as much as they do under the circumstances that they face every day. I implore you, members of the Board of Education, be our partners and fight for appropriate funding and staffing to properly serve all of our students.
Thank you. [applause] The next is Andrea Abbott, followed by Maria Yucich. I would ask that you please try to keep that limited so that we can keep moving, because obviously we have more speakers.
Good evening. I'm Andrea Abbott, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak to you this evening about our schools. And thank you to the GEA for inviting me to represent my colleagues in our secondary schools. I have taught fourth grade in Greenwich Public Schools for 28 years. Most of those have been spent at North Street. I am also fortunate to reside in Greenwich. In total, I have lived here for 53 years. My daughter grew up in town and attended Glenville, Western Middle School, gay, and Greenwich High School as a member of the class of 2004. This history has given me a deep appreciation for the Greenwich Public Schools, but there is reason to be concerned. There are obstacles preventing our secondary educators from reaching every single student. Unlike the elementary schools, secondary schools have a continuum of services. Even with this variety of programs, though, the needs of the secondary students are not consistently met. For instance, the high school's Education and Wellness Center opened with fanfare this fall without sufficient staffing to provide required classes to its students. Our secondary schools are also struggling with inclusion. Because of the district's tracking practices, students with learning differences and behavior problems end up in classes together. One educator shared how all 21 students in her class had learning differences, which is the antithesis of inclusion. This teacher must manage intellectual disabilities, emotional disabilities, and students with behavior challenges complicated by OCD and ADHD. There is only one paraprofessional in this class, and the parrot is assigned to support one specific student. I quote, "There are not enough teachers or special education teachers at GHS to ensure that our students will excel in this learning environment." The three minutes I have tonight are not nearly enough to address all the hurdles in the middle schools and the high school. Other issues include extreme student behaviors to carry over from elementary school, inability to revise staffing when there are mid-year changes in student needs, insufficient staffing to provide mandated services, and the loss of Paris and overcrowding in the academic labs, along with lack of support from some building administrators when dealing with student discipline. Instead of, "How can I help?", they hear, "What did you do?". The frustration secondary educators feel is understandable. They are expected to do more with less. There is no way to get what is expected to be done in this environment. Our students deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so it's Maria Yucich, followed by Nancy Tarantino.
Good evening. My name is Maria Yucich, and I have been an English Language Arts teacher at Central Middle School for 10 years. And before that, I was a paraprofessional at CMS for four years. I have lived in Greenwich for 19 years. Both of my children are products of the Greenwich Public School system, and both are currently teaching in the district. To say our family is fully invested in the community is an understatement. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I welcome the chance to speak on behalf of my GEA colleagues. You have heard the teacher's perspective from Carol, Barbara, and Andrea. I will end with this question. Where do we go from here? How can we address what one of my colleagues called "a crisis situation" in our schools? The answer is, we need to look beyond the award-winning school system that exists in headlines and face the new reality head-on. We have increasing numbers of identified special education students without corresponding increases in staffing. We have increasing numbers of students coming to schools with unregulated behavior and emotional distress without corresponding increases in staffing or specialized training for teachers. We do not have robust programming options at all levels. The BET and RTM impose budget constraints that have turned school funding into a zero-sum game that nobody wins. To address the new reality, GEA believes that the following are worth fighting for. First, appropriate staffing to meet the needs of all students, including more instructional aides. Second, appropriate and meaningful staff development. Our teachers, administrators, and instructional aides need to be able to identify and address the emotional and psychological conditions that their students bring to school every day. Third, a continuum of services at all levels, properly staffed. At the elementary level, there are only two options for students, in or outplaced. There have to be other options for the kids in our schools. Fourth, a professional culture in which teachers are able to speak to the needs of their children without the fear of retaliation or blame. Finally, a community commitment to acknowledging and addressing these issues for the success of all. We need you, the Board, to acknowledge the new reality and to work with us and the entire community to create schools where every child can learn and grow. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, the next speaker is Nancy Tarantino, followed by Phil Tarantino.
So we're standing together because it's a similar, you know, idea. Good evening. I'm a physical education teacher at Central Middle School and a parent of three children in the Greenwich Public School system. As a 20-year physical education teacher in the town of Greenwich, improving Central Middle School fields is important to me. After teaching at Eastern Middle School for 15 years, I decided to transfer to Central. I had heard about the field conditions at Central through the sports program and the consistent need for cancellations while teaching at Eastern. When I arrived at Central, I believed it really couldn't be that bad. I was wrong, it was worse. Anytime there is any precipitation on the field, it becomes unusable. As a veteran PE teacher, I'm often forced to modify units and lessons because of weather conditions. Usually, it would be a one-to-two-day inconvenience, however, at Central, because of the poor field conditions, what should be a few days of poor weather, will become a week of poor, unusable field conditions. The inconsistency in delivery of the curriculum is unfair to the student body at Central. As a physical education department, we see every student in the entire school in a two-day cycle. When field conditions impact our lessons, we are creative and innovative in our curriculum delivery. We consistently use the tennis courts as a teaching station to accommodate our 580-plus students. Is it a solution? Yes. Should it be an acceptable place to deliver, for instance, a flight football unit? No. Not when there is a field right on our campus that we should be using. Why, as a community, have we accepted this as the norm? After listening to the proposed options at the previous Board of Ed meeting, we need to install artificial turf. We utilize the field from 8:00 to 2:45 every day for PE classes, and sports teams just from Central use the field from 3:00 to 5:00. This puts the field usage well above the 25-hour maximum to maintain the engineered grass option. Keeping people off the field outside of school hours is just unrealistic. An option that was proposed was to put a tarp on the field. This would have to be done by park and rec in a timely manner every time there was any rain in the forecast. In addition to weather-related curriculum interruptions, there's also maintenance interruptions. Often during the day, the field is being seeded, aerated, lined, et cetera, and we have to alter instruction to accommodate the very important job of maintaining the field. Not only is this an interruption to instruction, but also a cost that would not be necessary if the field had artificial turf. The engineered grass option also poses an additional issue with a loss of a teaching space for close to a year, from installing to waiting for the seed to root. Additionally, sports teams would have to be bus for every practice and game, adding another hidden cost. By adding artificial turf, we're gaining a teaching space, a space for sports programs, recess, and outdoor education space, and all would have year-round possibilities. A larger space creates more activity time and accommodates our active student body. My hope is the field will become a state-of-the-art facility that supports the amazing student body at Central.
Thank you. The next speaker is Phil Tarantino, followed by Carl Higbee.
I'm here for one specific reason, and that's for the kids in our community. I'm here for what I believe the town needs. I'm the sports director at Western Middle School. I've lived in Greenwich my whole life and have gone to Central Middle School. I'm the former Greenwich High School baseball coach, and I coach football in this town. I currently help out with youth football in town, and I see what the kids have as their challenges. Being at Western Middle School, we have not had fields for four years, and I see what that impact means. Having two middle school fields closed for a year makes no sense to me. In addition, the fact that we would spend $1 million on a field that was just stated can't hold 25 hours of use, now we're looking at multiple years with two schools with no fields. Where are our kids going to go? Where are they going to play? Michael wanted to stand with me. He's a student at Central Middle School who, for three years, has had issues just getting on a field to play. The students deserve better at Central Middle School for not only PE class, but their sports. So if option one doesn't work, why would we throw away a million dollars of our town's money? It just doesn't make sense to me. Secondly, there's turf fields everywhere in Greenwich. Greenwich High School, Sacred Heart, Greenwich Country Day, Grunzer, Cosco Park, ready for this? The Greenwich Boys and Girls Club has turf. Almost every town in Connecticut has turf. North Haven Middle School just put in turf. Fairfield Middle School has a turf. Norwalk Middle School has a turf, which we play high school baseball on. Middle school sports teams play there. In addition, there's all college teams and every you name it, lacrosse, soccer, football, they play on turf. NFL teams play on turf. I coach in the GYFL. It's ages eight to 14. Guess where we play? You guessed it, on turf. And these are kids rolling around on turf. But I found out something today that was so interesting. Do you know that Cardinal Stadium, the turf that they just put in, there is not chrome rubber, it is hulled? And voyeur fill? Envire fill, I apologize. So it's already in Cardinal Stadium, and that's what they would use. It is not chrome rubber, which I thought was really interesting. By the way, Central Middle School sports teams are already playing on turf, not only against the private schools that are stated, but they play at Cosco Park against Western. That is our home field, Cosco Park. So every team that we have at Western, other than Field Hockey, which plays at Pembroke, we go to Cosco Park to play. This past season, we played a field hockey championship game there. It was amazing. It went into three overtimes. The kids played and worked so hard. Our coaches here, who did a wonderful job, we had to stop the game and modify the ending because the Greenwich High School freshman soccer team had their game, and they were kind enough to wait an additional 45 minutes for it to end. And you know what the parents came up to me after the game, you know what they said? "Why aren't there more fields for our kids?". And I just said, "I think we're working on it." I am here because I passionately believe that our kids, the Central Middle School kids, the community, deserves fields that are the best. It is brilliant.
Three minutes, time.
Board of Ed members, this is your opportunity to make a major impact in our community. We really, really need it.
Thank you. All right, the next speaker is Carl Higbee, followed by Mike Moore.
Hi, guys. Carl Higbee, RTM District, in Central Middle School, so I thought I'd come up here and tell everybody, I look, I hate government spending, so if I'm advocating for it, just please hear me out. The people who are protesting turf, which is, that's my sector here, is to debunk you, okay? There has never, ever, 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 ever been a NFL or professional sports team environmental risk or hazard or any type of illness related to turf ever settled or won, okay? Take that out. You don't care about the kids. That's not what you're doing. This is about kids having a place to practice. So when you people tell me that this is environmentally not friendly, that you're worried about the risk and health benefits to our children, hogwash. So the people that just put their names in an op-ed, Ellen Wolfson, Jude Bronstein, Warren Silver, Leantel, Brian Tooney, and a couple other people, you're the main opposition. You put your name in an op-ed saying you don't like this. You all live within a nine-iron distance to that field. You don't care about the kids. You're there trying to call people out to not put a turf field in there because you don't want to lose your personal backyard, and that's incredibly disingenuous. It's sad. It's dishonest and disgusting. Okay? And you want to be something for the kids. If you're honest, if you're honestly for the children, I want to see you raise all the money to tear up all the turf fields all over Greenwich, okay? Put grass fields back in there. That would be solving the problem. And if you tell me, "Oh, it's still for the environment", most of you people on that list I've read drive V8 trucks, okay? Turf, do it.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mike Moore, followed by Mike Patrone.
We have a speaker. Thank you. He's done. Mike Moore, please.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Mike Moore. I'm speaking here today as a teacher in the Venice Public Schools for 19 years, the former Greenwich High School baseball coach for 16 years, a camp owner who rents space from the town of Greenwich each summer since 2002, a volunteer coach with Coach Tarantino for the Crusaders in Cal Ripken, and a parent of a CMS student. You could say I'm invested in the youth of this town. I'm in favor of turfing the whole Central Middle School field for the following reasons. Practice time is important for the school sports teams, and the fields are closed at an alarming rate due to poor grass field drainage and, from what I have been told by parks and recreation officials, lack of staffing to maintain grass fields properly. I was told that as a Greenwich High School coach. As the former coach, I have consistently seen our team struggle at the beginning of the season when the Greenwich High School baseball field is not yet opened. We have to try it in the gym many times. And then come on strong at the end of the season when we get used to our home field, which has a batting cage. The times that we don't get to practice on our field, we practice at Julian Curtis, which is the JV field, so their practice gets canceled, and there's no batting cage there. So if we want to hit, we just have 15 kids on the field, and we throw in one kid at a time. Not very efficient. We did fundraise. The Greenwich Athletic Foundation, thank you, and our great Diamond Club, fundraised to get a batting cage there, but a neighbor complained because of the noise of a baseball bat and a ball would make, and the project was shut down. So therefore, there's no batting cage, and our kids don't get to do that. So my point is, because I have other ones, but they've already been stated, is that we need to stop listening to the voices of a few for their own backyard parks and stand up and say, "We need to do things for our kids." Those are schools. Those are schools, not parks. Julian Curtis is a school. Central Middle School is a school. It is not a park. And I think what Carl was talking about was being used just by the people that live around there, and I do live down the street, and I want a turf. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, the next speaker is Mike Patrone, followed by David McHann.
Good evening. I'm Mike Patrone, a father, current coach for Cal Ripken and Thunder Baseball, GYFL, a recently retired RTM member. That's why I'm smiling. Look, we've been talking about the inadequacy of fields in this town for a very, very long time. We all know, simple, that there's We all know, simple, that the man for field time for youth sports in this town way exceeds the availability of fields, right? And that means we have a young, vibrant athletic population in this town of residents and of taxpayers, which is a really good thing. But we also know that the population of town is aging, and we must do whatever we can to ensure that we are able to appeal to young families to want to be here and invest in Greenwich. Adequate, available fields for their kids to play on is a priority. Now, frankly, as a coach for travel baseball, I'm a little embarrassed with the number of times that I have to apologize for the condition of our fields in town when I'm hosting out-of-town travel tours. I've lost count how many times I've heard coaches from other teams come and say to me, wow, this is Greenwich. I would expect a heck of a lot more in Greenwich. I'm also tired of hearing from my own parents when we travel out of town to play in other fields saying, wow, why can't Greenwich have this? Now, I'm not talking about towns like Darien and Kane and Wester. I'm talking about the Maranicks, the Portchesters, the White Plains, and the Palms, okay? So now, it's unfortunate that it took so long to address the central field situation. And there are some folks here tonight who are opposed even funding this study that's leading into this discussion. By not proactively addressing the CMS field condition, thousands of CMS students pay the price by not being able to enjoy the same basic outdoor curriculum and after-school activities that some of their peers in other schools have. Now, this is your time to be bold, Board of Ed, and make up for the poor stewardship of the past and start to give back to the children of this town. A grass field at Central may help to even the playing field, no pun intended, for the CMS students, but we can do better than that, okay? We can start tipping the scales and creating more opportunities for all the young athletes in this town, regardless of where they go to school. The only way to do that is to install synthetic turf playing surface, which will yield three times the play in the latter's grass field. Now, granted, this is far from a silver bullet for our field error's problem, and more steps are needed. But this is the most important step, because this is the first step. But thank you very much, and respectfully ask you to go and support full synthetic turf.
All right. The next speaker is David Langhorn, followed by Dom Casamassima.
Good evening. I'm here. Most of you probably have no idea who I am, but that's probably the okay. We'll try to keep it that way. Couple of things that I noticed so far. We've had a lot of committees. We've had subcommittees, meetings, associations, groups. We're all going to gang together and get something done. I'm my fourth year. My second child's coming through Western Middle School without any hope of seeing a field. She graduated in May. My older son's had two years on the fields, and remarkably, he survived. I'm amazed. I don't know how he lived, but he did. I have a third son who'll be coming through starting this year here. I'm hopeful that he'll survive the same school project we had before from the fields. It is unbelievable, unconscionable, that these fields are still closed. I stood at the meeting. I wasn't allowed to ask any questions. They shoved me into the gym, and you can have one-on-one questions. Yep, we're on it. We got a guy. We got this guy. We got that guy. We got this guy. Everybody's got their hands in their back pockets taking money. Meanwhile, we got nothing. On a completely serious note, the Teachers Association lady came up here. She's talking about all the kids that are all sorts jammed up at school, misbehavior, stabbing, biting, chewing, not reading, not writing, not doing the mathematics. How about you get your ass outside and do some work? Have some fun, but you can't go outside because some damn fly came here and said the kids are gonna die. I asked a simple question when I was here last time. Has anybody done the research on the 50 years of kids that play on those fields? Of course not. Not one of them's dead. It's ridiculous that we're still doing this four years later. As for Central, the whole school's an embarrassment. The building's falling down. It looks like a hellhole. Everything's dark. The trees are everywhere, and the fields look like crap. It's unbelievable that we all sit here in our suits and ties, all snazzy and cool over $3 million bucks. Come on. Someone has to make a decision and say, go. I'm trying my best to get a shed for the basketball team at Greenwich High School. A shed, 16 by 10. You and I could install at home in 30 minutes. There were 12 people on email had to approve it. That is absurd. And there's already a shed. So please, I'm curious, every now and then,
Thirty seconds.
Come on, Karen, about that. Someone's gotta make a decision. Who makes the decision on who does the field? There is a guy who says, go. There is a guy at where I work that says, go. There's a guy where he works that says, go. Someone said to him, show up tonight at 7 o'clock and record. Someone has to say yes. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. All right. Dom, you're up next, followed by Eden Sitron.
Good morning. Board members, parents, teachers, and students. My name is Dominic Casamassima, and I'm here at Western Middle School speaking with Eden Sitron and Martin Lip. We are here to tell you about one of the biggest problems facing our society today, climate change. We know that today we will be voting on what to do with Central Middle School fields, and we, as students, we believe that artificial turf will be harmful for current and future CMS kids. Changing all the ground, even a little bit, would have a negative effect on the climate and levels of CO2 in the atmosphere. The loss of plants would reduce the amount of carbon dioxide absorbed and add plastics such as nylon or polypropylene. In addition, not only will you provide many animals of their homes, but you will also be putting all kinds of dangerous metals, such as lead, cadmium, chromium, and others into the environment. Lead is a chronic cumulative neurotoxin, basically meaning that it gathers up over a long time and is toxic for your brain. Cadmium is also known to cause cancer, and when inhaled, can cause flu-like symptoms and kidney, bone, and lung disease. Chromium can cause many health problems, ranging from skin rash and nosebleeds to alteration of genetic material. There are also many chemicals in the material that is used to make artificial turf that are known to be carcinogenic and irritants, meaning that they can cause cancer and irritate skin. Artificial turf has other negative effects, like asthma and learning disabilities. Not only that, but astroturf is known to heat up, making it very hard to play on hot day. I pass my time to Eden Sitron.
Hello. My name is Eden Sitron, and I will now continue the argument made by Dominic Casamassima. Laura Kahn, a chairwoman of the New Haven Environmental Advisory Council, submitted a testimony saying, "We should not be removing soil and replacing it with synthetics. The soil is the earth's filtering system for toxins. Removing large swaths of soil deprives our planet of its ability to absorb, dilute, and eliminate poisons." Laura Kahn. Artificial turf is comprised of at least three layers of synthetic materials, often four. A plastic fabric mat, a layer of perforated polypropylene styrofoam, EPDM, which is pretty much a synthetic rubber meant to replace the chrome rubber from tires that used to be used, and, last, a carpet of plastic grass. Even if these materials can last forever, they eventually just break into smaller and smaller parts, which end up in our water and sometimes in our bodies. The chrome rubber itself, which is only one layer, is horrible for the environment. It is made up of ground-up recycled tires, which contain numerous toxic chemicals, such as styrene and butadiene. Styrene is a neurotoxic and a probable human carcinogen. Tires are also likely to contain lead and cadmium, which are both neurotoxic as well as countless other toxins picked up from traveling on the roads or highways where numerous other polyaromatic hydrocarbons and other harmful chemicals can be found. As you know from the process of the carbon cycle, cutting down the grass would mean fewer plants or photosynthesizers, which would mean less absorption of CO2. Not only that, but the production of artificial turf would also emit CO2 into the atmosphere. I now pass my time to my fellow CMS student, Martin Lip.
Hello. My name is Martin Lip, and I'm here continuing Dominic Casamassima and Eden Sitron's argument. Financially, the cost to install artificial turf is staggering. I use Google Maps to estimate Central Middle School's fields at 4.43 acres, which is 272,000 square feet. Multiplied by the average cost of artificial turf per square foot equals about $2 million to install. You may think that artificial turf is easier to maintain, but it costs almost as much to maintain as natural grass, and it has to be replaced when it wears out. The health issues of artificial turf and overall installation cost is just not worth it. Putting engineered grass on the field also affects our students' and the wildlife's health because it may contain pesticides and chemicals that are harmful to the environment. Overall, artificial turf is a much worse solution than normal grass. It is bad for the environment, dangerous to the animals that live there, the students that use it, and it is very costly. A much wiser solution is to use natural turf or to just replace the drainage. If you don't agree with what we are saying, if you think we are just kids and shouldn't be listened to, then don't listen to us. Listen to the science for the health of our wallet, the health of our students, and the health of our planet. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. We actually always love to hear from students. All right. The next speaker is Bob Strassel, followed by Susan Rudolph.
Thanks. Members of the Board, Superintendent, my name is Bob Strassel. I live in Cosco, Connecticut. I've lived there for 11 years. All my kids, my son is gonna go to Central Middle School next year. My daughter's gone through Central Middle School. My daughter's now in high school. Both my kids are involved in athletics. My son plays for the Crusaders, and he also plays baseball within the town. I just want to address the issue at hand, synthetic turf. There's been much back and forth regarding children's safety and the current issues of synthetic turf. For every report that people produce, each side can dispute it. I find it humorous that the opposition said nothing when turf was installed at Greenwich High School, Boys and Girls Club, Cosco Park recently. Huge installation, no one said a word. I find this dishonest, disingenuous, and hypocritical. It wasn't until turf was an option near where they live that it was opposed. Or is the real issue unclear? That these people wish to exclude others from an area that is not theirs. It's all ours, and really, it's our kids. The town is as short as the playing fields, and the ones we have are substantially subpar. We've heard everybody talk. We know it. It's true. It's a record, okay? Fairfield County, Westchester, basically any state that I visit that has better fields than Greenwich, Connecticut. It's sad. We're one of the wealthiest towns in the country, and our fields are terrible. According to the meeting notes of the March 22, 2018, meeting of the Board of Estimate and Taxation Public Hearing, and I want you to just listen to this. Warren Silver, resident CMS neighborhood and parent of public school student, spoke in opposition to funding the BOE feasibility study of middle school playing fields. Opposition of the study and general lack of accountability for poor planning, spoke in opposition to lighting school playing fields. Arthur Yee, resident CMS neighborhood for 30 years, spoke in opposition to funding the BOE feasibility study, the feasibility study, of the middle school playing fields and raised issue regarding artificial turf, lack of traffic studied by the BOA at Parks and Rec, and the GHS use of the CMS playing field. Pathetic. Leanne Tell, resident CMS neighborhood, spoke in opposition to funding the BOE feasibility study of middle school playing fields. Let's call a spade a spade, okay? All the people who are listening as part of a real grasp for healthy kids. Pathetic. I hope there was a way to get the fields completed to benefit our kids, the neighborhoods, our schools, and the Greenwich community in sports programs. Here are a few comments made by the community. I'm a conference student at the Central Middle School, and I think there's a need for turf because we never get to go outside for gym because it is always too wet. Also, I played for the baseball team, and last year we couldn't have a home game or even practice outside because the field was a swamp. The kids at CMS have suffered for years without opportunity to have outdoor pee due to the poor conditions of the fields. Sports have been impacted as well due to this issue. This needs to be done to ensure future students get proper physical education. The community will also benefit with turf fields.
Time.
Thank you for your time.
Hang on one second. The next speaker is Susan Rudolph, followed by Patricia Taylor, and somebody left their glasses in the podium. Peter, yours isn't working.
So, good evening. I'm Susan Rudolph. I speak in a calmer voice as the grandmother of three grandsons, the youngest of whom will be at Central next year. I'm going to use my time to introduce three professionals who will be delivering remarks this evening. They are not being paid to be here. You will hear from Ms. Patricia Taylor, Deputy Outreach Director, as well as the Director of the Plastics Project for Environment and Human Health. Dr. Sarah Evans, mother of three, is Assistant Professor, Environmental Medicine and Public Health at Mount Sinai. Classically trained neuroscientist, she conducts research on the effects of exposure to endocrine-disrupting chemicals. Dr. Arthur Yee, who was educated in our own Greenwich public schools, did his internship and residency at Columbia Presbyterian. He is board certified in both internal medicine and infectious diseases. In addition, four others wanted to join us this evening, but they had scheduling conflicts. However, I have their written statements, and will submit them following. Dr. Diana Zuckerman is President of the National Center for Health Research in Washington, DC. After postdoctoral training at Yale Medical School, Dr. Zuckerman spent 10 years working at the US Department of Health and Human Services. Dr. David Brown is Director of Public Health Toxicology for Environment and Human Health. He was the Chief of Environmental Epidemiology and Occupational Health at Connecticut's Department of Health and formerly a Deputy Director at the CDC in Atlanta, Georgia. Dr. Brown writes, "Good evening to everyone present with a special greeting to the parents here tonight." He includes a number of facts and ends with this. Before any more athletes or schoolchildren are exposed to artificial turf, we need to determine how those exposures will impact their health over time and whether more available field hours and predictable field quality are worth taking the measured risk to our children's health. Third, Dr. Vasily Vasilius is the Chair of the Department of Environmental Health Sciences at the Yale School of Medicine. Received his PhD in Biochemical Pharmacology. He writes the health hazards of agents used in artificial turf fields is cause for conditional concern. Fanny Sue Baker sends a letter. She was a teacher at the high school and she says, "I definitely believe there should be natural grass in our fields." So, I direct this to you ladies and gentlemen and you people sitting here. Whenever you hear a statement that focuses on field time and predictable field quality while discounting or ignoring the health of people and environment, I urge you to think of what the scientists and physicians are telling us. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Patricia Taylor followed by Laura Costin.
Good evening and thank you. My name is Patricia Taylor. I am Deputy Outreach Director for Environment and Human Health Inc. We're a ten-member nonprofit, science-based organization composed of physicians, public health professionals, and policy experts. We're dedicated to protecting human health from environmental harms. Malona McBroom has been hired to advise Greenwich on new fields for Central Middle School. They presented your town with three options for resurfacing the fields. Natural grass, synthetic turf, or a hybrid of the two. We're happy to see that Malona McBroom has offered Greenwich the option of natural grass and we are here tonight in support of that choice. It is EHHI's position that there is no safer surface for students and athletes to play upon than grass. I submitted a letter to the board by EHHI's health professionals for your record. From their manufacturer to their disposal, synthetic turf fields are more polluting and less healthy than grass fields. By installing artificial fields, you will expose your children and adolescent athletes daily to multiple chemicals of concern, including carcinogens, endocrine disruptors, and PFAs found in the components of these fields. Artificial fields need to be replaced eight to ten years' time. Connecticut has no special regulations for regulating how you will dispose of the fields. At the present time, there's only one certified recycling center for synthetic turf fields in the world, in Denmark. According to the Synthetic Turf Council Industries Lobbying Group, the average artificial field contains approximately forty thousand pounds of plastic carpet and forty thousand, four hundred thousand pounds of infill. Greenwich residents voted to ban single-use plastic bags. Residents have organized to ban other plastic items like straws, stirs, and expanded polystyrene food containers. Three seventh-grade students at a private school in Greenwich, Whitby School, founded an organization called Greenwich Bottles No More, seeking to ban single-use plastic water bottles in your town. The Greenwich Recycling Advisory Board and Waste Free Greenwich are partnering with the Greenwich Department of Public Works, the Conservation Commission, and Greenwich Green and Clean to start a town-wide composting program by April twenty-second. Do these residents and all those others who carefully recycle here every day know that synthetic means plastic? Synthetic turf fields are composed of acres of plastic grass backed by latex and rubber pads, glued together with polyurethane adhesive, and then filled with thousands of pounds of waste higher chrome rubber, which is also plastic, or alternative infills. As such, artificial fields are truly not sleeping with a sustainable Greenwich.
Thank you very much.
If you have additional comments, you can.
Pardon me?
If you have additional comments, you can share.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
The time is up. If you have additional comments.
Okay, thank you for this. For all of this, we support.
Okay, thank you very much.
A good Greenwich system, talk with natural grass.
Three minutes is up and we have a lot of other speakers. Thank you. All right, next up is Arthur Yi followed by Li Antel.
Okay, my way of introduction, I actually have been a resident here for fifty years, not thirty years, as one of the previous speakers said. I'm the parent of three daughters. One has gone through Central Middle School back in two thousand five and I have two daughters who are currently students there right now. I myself graduated from Central Junior High School back in the seventies. I won't tell you what part of the seventies, but I graduated in the seventies. I also want to emphasize that I forgot my T-shirt at home. It said, "Central Side, The Best Side." And I just said, "Best Side." So with that in mind, I wanted to let you know that, as you probably know, our current first selectmen, who I've spoken to, and our previous first selectman, Peter Tessie, have come out in favor of natural grass over artificial turf. They came to that conclusion after reading literature, doing research, and speaking to many, many town residents about that before coming to conclusions. My question to the artificial turf proponents is, have you done your research? I seem to get more emotional response from speakers here as opposed to doing the research because if they've done their research, they would know that the EPA, the CDC, and OSHA have issued warnings against artificial turf.
Not true!
Which is either, it's organic or not. There's no studies that show that artificial turf is safe for children. The other thing you fail to realize is that children and adults are different manners. Children are not as much adults. In medicine, we know that children are more susceptible to toxic effects of anything. Why do we vaccinate kids with babies within twenty-four hours after birth against SARS-B, because we know that they develop liver cancer, so they're high risk. Why do we prevent kids not smoking until age twenty-one, which a lot of states have gone to? Because we know if they start smoking earlier, the toxic effects on their lungs will cause myocardial disease. Why does American Pediatrics advise against contact football in kids five to ten years old? They recommend starting in high school because studies have shown for American Pediatrics that kids who start football earlier have twelve, thirteen-year early development of chronic neurological brain disease by MRI scans and neurocardiometrist studies. So before you say you're proposing artificial turf, have you done your research? I suspect not. And if you haven't, I would do so. Right now, there's no studies showing it's safe in kids. As you know, this brings back memories of what happened to the tobacco industry. Back in the eighties, nineteen sixty-four, when the Surgeon General came out with a report saying that smoking and lung cancer were intimately related, the tobacco companies already against that. It wasn't until two decades later that they finally acknowledged that there's a link between cannabis smoking and cigarette smoking. What about those people who listen to cigarette companies? They ended up low cancer. What about Christine Todd McWhitman, the EPA administrator in two thousand one? When she declared that the water and the air is safe around two thousand, around zero? Well, it wasn't. She apologized in two thousand sixteen, saying that she misspoke. She didn't lie, she misspoke because she acknowledged that there weren't those studies available to show that. Right now, there are no studies showing that it's safe in kids. Kids are more susceptible, again, not over NFL stadiums, that grown adults get exposed to. But you're talking about children, I do think that you don't realize the impact on children, that's the potential there. To have us in plus to kids.
Time. Thank you.
And cancer, soccer ballers.
The next speaker is Li Antel followed by Jeff Cordelak. No, I do not. She's on the non-agenda item. She may be on another list. There's another list down there. We'll call you when we get to your name. You're not the next speaker.
Sorry, thank you. My name is Sarah Evans.
Sarah, you're not the next speaker.
Oh, I cannot.
No, you're not. I don't see your name on the list that I have. There's another list. We will get to you. It's Li Antel followed by Jeff Cordelak.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Yes, my name is Li Antel. And just for the record, yes, a handful of us did put our names on an op-ed piece recently, but we have over twenty-four hundred signatures on a petition against artificial turf. So it is more than that to be fair. I want to first start off by saying that I have an eighth-grade daughter and a sixth-grade son at Central Middle School. My daughter has been playing field hockey for the past three years at CMS and my son has played soccer this past year at CMS. Both fabulous times, fabulous sports. As a mom of two Central Middle School athletes, I understand the frustration that people have when the fields are closed due to weather, as do my kids. I agree that something needs to be done to improve the fields. However, I do not believe that installing artificial turf is the right answer. Besides the health risks and environmental impact associated with artificial turf, there is also a higher cost with installing and maintaining artificial turf. Tonight, board, you have three choices before you to change Central Middle School fields. It's a wonderful thing to have choices. If you decide to install artificial turf, you will be taking a choice away from parents whose children go to Central Middle School. Students will have no choice during PE classes or after-school sports programs but to play on artificial turf. I have heard that some parents at nearby private schools have taken their kids out of PE when they are playing on artificial turf. This was because they did not have a choice to play on natural grass. There are plenty of sports programs in town that parents can choose to sign their children up for. Some of those programs play on artificial turf, like at Cosco Park, like other people have said. That's a choice parents have. Central Middle School is a public school and parents should have the right to have their kids learn in a healthy and non-toxic environment. Please don't take choice away from parents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jeff Cordelak followed by Laura Costin.
Good evening. It's wonderful to be here in the town of Greenwich. My name is Jeff Cordelak. I have a long storied history of trying to encourage people not to ruin the world. I have worked for the National Audubon Society here in town for ten years. I spent the last four years certifying over four hundred landscapers to be organic who work across the nation caring for lawns and sports fields everywhere. They're as close as this town and they're as far as Hawaii. They are doing the job because it's profitable, doable, and it works for the people who hire them. They don't complain about sports time. They are happy customers playing on grass with kids that know grass only. Don't forget, the US soccer teams would rather to be on real grass for a reason. Kids like real grass, dogs like real grass, and when we change things to a turf field, it starts to go out of multiple use, especially in a school field. I mean, how many dogs want to roll around on those turf fields? But let me just give you some background for your decision because your decision here tonight is to decide beyond a reasonable doubt what's the right thing to do. And I would like you to ask yourself, have you all heard about drug-resistant diseases that can be found and thrive on fake turf fields? Have you all assessed and set standards for when to stop summertime play above eighty degrees? Where second and third degree burns are a well-known problem sending kids to emergency rooms. Second and third degree burns. Have you hired an organic specialist to bid on creating the national, natural field? I'm so glad to hear that one has been specked out and that's great. Make sure you get multiple bids on grass fields. Or have your current person, if you go with them for a grass field, work with the top experts because they may be more experienced in turf fields than organic grass fields, which we're required to have at Central Middle School. Nothing but organic treatments. Have you heard about the fumes from the fires on those fields? What about the neighborhood when it catches on fire? Have you ever seen it?
Thirty seconds.
Have you really thought that, my gosh, these terrible fields that have no drainage, they've already been putting up with fifty hours of use? Imagine if you gave them a little treatment. Gave them some drainage, gave them some food, keep on top of things, and encourage the people that take care of them to have pride in them. Because there's hundreds of town workers celebrating their fields across the nation.
Time.
I've certified them.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. You guys are all wonderful and please invest in sports fields.
We have additional speakers, so please be respectful of the time.
Please invest in sports.
The next speaker is Laura Costin followed by Mike Pacino.
So, my name is Laura Costin. I'm the parent of a Central Middle School student and for years, I've been an advocate for this board for children playing on grass fields whenever possible. And when it wasn't possible, I've advocated for organic surfaces, including at Cardinal Stadium. Playing on Central's field, as you know, has been dicey. We are in desperate need of an improvement. The Department of Parks and Rec says these fields are used for fifty-three hours a week for three months in the fall and three months in the spring. Twenty of those fifty-three hours are accounted for by outside user groups, which may be one of the reasons our fields look like they do. Twenty-five of those fifty-three hours are accounted for by our PE classes and I am a parent who wants their child to be able to partake in PE classes whenever possible. And I've heard people say tonight that turf might solve this like muddy field problem. I've played college sports on turf. Anyone who plays on turf knows that you generally wear turf shoes or even cleats, which are less ideal, so that you're not sliding around all over on a turf. I don't think we're going to ask our students to purchase special shoes so they can participate in gym class because otherwise, it's a mess. So I really feel what we need is to prioritize. If usage of our school field is a priority for our students, the primary stakeholders, maybe it should be used primarily for that purpose. Perhaps secondarily, it should be used for town-run recreation. And lastly, when it comes to allowing Central to be used by for-profit entities and other leagues, perhaps there should be more discretion. My kids play for a great flag football league, but it's a for-profit entity that uses our grounds and that means wear and tear. Maybe those teams which range from pre-K to high school should be encouraged to look elsewhere for practices. Carmel Academy on Lake Avenue is a school that is closing. They have fields. You know, we have private schools in town like Greenwich Country Day that don't even use their fields on the weekends. Let's not ignore also the irony of where we are tonight at a school that hasn't had fields since 2016 and I was at that meeting where we were all stuck in a back room and couldn't ask any questions.
Thirty seconds.
So, you know, we have space in this town. I suggest we actually utilize it and at Central, give our kids a grass field and make it a good one quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mike Pacino followed by Kirk Putnam.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Best Side List. Thank you guys for coming down tonight. Quickly, first, thirty million dollars we don't have to remediate the fields out here. We need to cap it. We need to turf it. We need to light it up. Make Western Middle School the showplace field of the town of Greenwich. We've got enough parking, enough field space. We could have three lacrosse fields, a football field, a baseball field, a softball field. Everything we at heart's desire is right out there, ready to do it. Get a set, make this happen. I'm gonna go in front of the board of selectmen and try to push this forward starting tomorrow. So, let's get this ball rolling with Western. On another thing, let's talk to the Board of Health. We have had signs since I was a kid at every field that says, "No dogs allowed" on hortivention fields. We probably could settle this because people don't want turf because they can't let their dogs run. So let's end that, enforce that law. But now, let's get to the other points right here. Quiet, come on, they only got three minutes. They're, parents hard with us. So, you've got two things. You've got, and this is like, and I was a state representative up in Hartford and this is like a reunion with these PhDs and doctors that all come in because we've had this debate before up in Hartford. We had this debate when I served on the Children's Committee when we were talking about crumb rubber fill at playgrounds being utilized and we wound up outlining that. And why did we do that? Because kids between four and eight and one and four, where there's potential for them to ingest crumb rubber. And we understood that that was a problem. Why? Because parents sit on their phones and they don't look at their kids anymore like they're supposed to do. But that's not the case. We never brought this up. In Hartford, talking about fields because this was a completely different issue. And it's a completely different issue here and the same thing holds true, has held true in those debates. Not one doctor, not one scientist, not one person that came up there could tell us of one case that was tied scientifically, specifically, without a question, without a doubt, that cancer was caused because of that particular athletic field. Never happened. Still hasn't happened to this day, but we go with the fear of God that we're going to get cancer from this artificial turf. Listen, everything's better with bacon, but don't take my bacon away. They tell me that that may cause cancer too. You can't go on this premise. Now, we do have other fills. We have EnviroFill, we have Safe Shell, we have traditional rubber, sustainable pine infill. I know all this stuff.
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds enough. Okay. And then this last wonderful PhD talks about the remediation of the fields at the end of the day. Well, guess what? There is a company in Denmark and I called them and talked to them. Guess where they're coming? United States of America. They have an application right now for the East Coast and the West Coast to build factories. And they recycle ninety-nine point three percent. So that's where our recycled turf fields are going to go because they will be up and running by the time our fields are actually ready to be taken care of. So two questions that you have in front of you are done.
Time.
If any, you have no problems with those anymore. You have a company and I will give you information. I've already sent the information to Mr. Carr.
Thank you, Mike. All right, the next speaker is Kirk Putnam followed by Erica Mueller.
All right, Peter, I thought you had a question. I saw you. Oh, you're saying.
Just saying.
No, I sent you the information. Give it to them.
All right, so Kirk Putnam followed by Erica Mueller.
Okay, thank you for listening this evening. My name's Kirk Putnam. I've had the privilege of being in the town of Greenwich for over twenty years. I've been the Greenwich High School Boys varsity coach for twenty years. Greenwich United and OJRCC Coaching Director for Soccer. Also the GSA Volunteer President for the last nine years while being also in that club for twenty years. I've probably coached and seen over twenty thousand players from the town of Greenwich in the time that I've been here. And I consider that to be a privilege. Also, I've known Joe for a long, long time as well, going back many years. So a few things that I want to point out. One, you don't have enough grass fields in Greenwich to actually have proper grass fields because you can't rest them. That's the first problem that you have. If you had multiple grass fields, I'd be all for grass fields. I prefer to play soccer on grass. I know kids do. You simply don't have enough of them. The best grass field that you did have got taken away. That was a lower haven. The best grass field that you did have got taken away. That was a lower haven. You now can't go on it because the dogs are allowed to run on it. So first of all, you've gotta go to turf because you don't have a big enough supply of fields to start with. The second thing, the infills. So I was fortunate to be at Greenwich High School when they put the turf field finally in and ended the entire campus. I'm still standing. I haven't dropped down bed yet. My health happens to be pretty good from what my doctor told me three weeks ago. There is a geo-fill that they do now, okay? Every field I have been to recently that's gone turf is not rubber anymore. It's an organic coconut shell. It's ground up. It doesn't give off toxins. And it seems that that's the way that turf fields are now going. They're white, and there's no rubber in them anymore, okay? So I think people need to get beyond this fallacy that everything out there is all this ground-up tire that goes in these fields. That's not the case anymore, okay? And then the third thing, I think the reality is, we need to start thinking about our kids. This town loves to ride off the back of its town's programs and its high school programs being successful. Everybody loves to talk about that. That starts all the way down when your kids are younger. Doesn't happen when they just go to the high school. It's about the preparation that it takes to actually get them there. And with these fields that we currently have, and last year alone, GSA lost fifty percent of its practice time in the spring alone. Fifty percent of the time, kids could not actually go out on the fields and run around. I think that's an absolute travesty for a town like Greenwich, where I have been to literally every town in twenty years in Connecticut. And honestly, you have the worst fields in the state of Connecticut. The worst. And when people come down here to play games against us, they, there's shock on their face. A quick story, last year, I had to go and get a landscaper to blow the water off of a field so that my kids could play against the team.
Time. Thank you.
You need turf fields, okay? So way to go.
All right. The next speaker is Erica Mueller, followed by Julie DeShawn.
Hi. I'm speaking today as a parent of a Central Middle School student. I have four kids. My husband and I both born in Greenwich, and I'm also a school counselor in the district as well. So I'm very passionate about our kids and our community. I wanted to just say a couple of things that haven't been said so far. In two and a half days, we've had over seven hundred signatures in favor of turf fields. The Parks and Recreation Department, that is responsible for maintaining and assigning the fields, is recommending turf for Central. The consultant the town hired also stated that with the amount of hours that Central is utilizing the fields, they should have turf. No one is saying that turf needs to be in every grass area in Greenwich. Central is a school field. It's not a park, as Mr. Moore mentioned. There are parks in the towns that have grass and can sustain a few hours a week when they're used. But Central is not the same as Benny Park, or Bruce Park, or Lachlan Park. We need to feel that accommodation supports an active student body, sports program, and town leaders. If you're truly looking for its best interest of the children in our community, then the answer is to install turf. As a town, we've already made a decision regarding its safety of turf when we installed it into the Greenwich High School field. Thank you.
All right. So Julie, followed by Rosemary Heissong.
Good evening. My name is Julie DeShawn. Tonight, I'd like to highlight two issues that have significant consequences for the health of our children and our environment. First, the health and environmental hazards associated with artificial turf present an unacceptable risk to the long-term well-being of our children and natural resources. It is essential to heed the warnings of scientists and medical professionals and take the precautionary approach. Natural grass with proper drainage designed and maintained professionally is the clear solution at Central Middle School. Second, I'd like to emphasize the necessity of transitioning to reusable wares and a dishwashing system in our school cafeterias. I thank the board for approving funds to implement a reusable ware system. But this is not a done deal. The superintendent and administration, as instructed by the board, still must present the most fiscally responsible, sustainable, and effective plan to the BET and RTM, and do their due diligence in a timely manner to find the best solution. The district purchases over one million single-use wares at a cost of sixty-one thousand dollars each year. The majority is tossed in the trash to be incinerated at a cost to taxpayers and a detriment of our air and soil quality. These non-recyclable paper trays alone make up eighty percent of cafeteria trash, as demonstrated during the new Lebanon pilot, and you can see in this photo from old Greenwich School today. If disposable trays are replaced by reusable wares, waste output will be cut from six barrels of trash to just one per day. For all K through eight schools, that equates to twelve thousand six hundred bags of trash saved annually, enough to fill almost nineteen tractor trailers. This volume costs our town over thirty-nine thousand dollars to incinerate currently, but could be more in the coming year. Waiting another year means wasting a hundred thousand dollars in purchasing and disposal costs. It is another year of trashing over half a million trays. Another year of pedagogical dishonesty, teaching students that it's okay to be wasteful. A message that students clearly take to heart, as you heard from Zane earlier. This, oh, sorry. The town of Greenwich is recognizing the fiscal and environmental consequences of wasteful practices. The time is now to lead by example and do what's right for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rosemary Heissong, followed by Jennifer Katay.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm here tonight to speak in support of what I think is the easiest, quickest, and best solution for Central Middle School, which is to install turf fields. I have two middle-school-aged children. My son plays both baseball and soccer. He's been fortunate enough to be at Eastern Middle School, which I think is, has had the most access to their fields. It still does get closed on days of inclement weather. But his soccer practices through the Greenwich United organization have occasionally been canceled because they're located sometimes at Central Middle School. And when it's rained, the fields have become unplayable at times. But having had a, watched a middle-school boy over the last three years, the idea that they can't go out and run and move their body during the hours that they are in school, have to be confined to the gym, the tennis courts are a more limited area. Having the fields usable is very important. And so I ask that you support the artificial turf in the field. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jennifer Katay, followed by Alain Katay.
Good evening. Over the last nine months, my husband and I have stood before this board to discuss our daughter Lily's special education journey in the Greenwich Public Schools. What started out to be a story about our daughter has now become a much larger journey for scores of families and teachers across this district. I want to applaud the brave teachers who stood up here tonight in support of special education reform. I am here tonight not only to represent our daughter, but as a representative to many special education families. I am also one of the parents who was chosen to sit on the Keed Ed Task Course. Keed Ed Task Course had a meeting last evening, and we were made privy to the results of the interview process, which included parents as well as teachers and administrators. I was particularly awestruck by teachers and administrators whose thoughts were brutally honest and in most cases confirmed what parents have been vocalizing for years. To our board members, I highly suggest you read the draft report. Year after year, we sit at these Board of Ed meetings, and we hear about advances in curriculums throughout the district. We never hear about any innovative programs to address the growing concerns for special education. We have the data. We have the research on techniques that are successful. Why aren't we bringing them into Greenwich Public Schools? We hear about millions of dollars spent on Cardinal Stadium. We hear about money spent on recycling and green schools concerns. But yet, this Board of Education has been unable to find the funds to provide an appropriate education to our special education children. Special education parents have voiced their concerns, both to this board as well as to the BET. We are active participants in Keed Ed. We have said it before, and I will repeat it tonight. We believe in Dr. Jones. She has been a pillar of strength. We know she wants change for our special education children, but her hands are tied. Teachers have now publicly stated they fear retribution for speaking up. They have stated they need training. We need the board members here to stop talking.
Thirty seconds.
Get out of your seats to make change for these children. Children are suffering. Find the funds now. We won't accept that it will take years to come up with funding for these children. We won't accept more talk or more surveys. The data you need is right in front of you tonight. Get behind Dr. Jones and give her the ability to make the necessary changes. We won't accept that you are forcing teachers to break the law.
Time.
So the next speaker is Brian Tony, followed by Alena Cantavano. I'm gonna get that wrong. I'm sorry.
Hello, and hello all, and thank you very much. I'm talking here regarding Central Middle School. I will give you a background. Yes, I am a neighbor. Yes, I've coached lacrosse since nineteen ninety. Coached thousands of children. And the fact, one of the big reasons we're all saying the fields are closed so much. Thirty years ago, the fields were never closed. We played in the rain. We played sports, whatever the weather was. Now, for Central Middle School. Central Middle School is in the middle of the largest greenway in Greenwich. Going from Greenwich Country Club, Greenwich Country Day School, and into the Palmerange property. There are deer, wildlife going through that field every day. The other thing is that, granted, we need more fields. The issue with, rather, Central Middle School is it's one of the only fields in town that is below street level. It's below grade. It's going to fill. Anything we put in there, especially a grass field with drainage, will survive. You could get the use, but clearly, any use that you're going to do, the field's gotta be raised, and it's gotta have drainage. Another thing that I think that you should really look at is eventually, a new school is going to be built. With a grass field, you have a little more options. To move around the buildings. But whatever you have to do, I'm not an expert in construction, but clearly, they're going to have, they're not gonna put it in the parking lot. It's going to be towards the fields. Another thing is, anyone that knows and lives near Central, that field is used all the time. It is not a private park. It is used by field, by students, and pay-to-play programs year-round, every weekend, and every day. So, and I love, I'm a sportsman. Another thing, the health issues. You can say yes or no, but why, if we have the option of a grass field, why not use it? It can be done. It's less expensive. Less expensive to maintain, and can be seeded every year. You know, it can be made. The key is, it's a properly-drained field, and that can be used. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. The next speaker is Alena Cantavano, followed by Warren Silver.
Yep, Mr. Sher. How many more of these do we have?
So after this speaker, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Signed up there, and is there another sign-up sheet?
No, we're just taking them all in order?
We're taking them in order.
Okay.
First, I want to say thank you to all the board members here. My name is Alena Cantavano, and it is an honor to be here tonight. I served in ninth grade here, I think it was probably the last year ninth grade was here, as the ninth-grade school president. And that was just a wonderful year. It's giving away my age a little bit, huh? I just want to say, be very careful with how you are making your decisions about this field. If it's your child, and it's just one child, and it's your child, imagine, just imagine, what it would feel like when your child, and this happened to a family member, and this family member of mine, who, while playing football, developed asthma. Never had it before in his life. He developed asthma. He couldn't breathe. But he was insistent on playing, and he played. And every time it was hot, he couldn't breathe, but he continued to play. He also suffered and had two concussions. He was told, "One more. That's it." Luckily, he was at the end of his year, and he was out, luckily. Be careful. Do your studies. I'm not saying not to get a turf, but I'm not saying to get a turf. Be careful. Do your studies. Get your recommendations. Get your scientific data. Don't play around with this. Like I said, if it's one child, and that one child belongs to you. I know dads love to have their kids play. Moms are proud of them. Don't even take the chance, all right? Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, we're taking comments of the order that they're in.
Just ask you how many more people are gonna speak. He's not even paying attention. He's texting on his phone.
I'm sorry, sir. We're taking the public comment.
We have elected you to sit at that board. Start paying attention to these people.
All right. The next speaker, the next speaker is Warren Silver, followed by another one.
I see you. Yeah.
Okay, let's move on, please.
Good evening. My name is Warren Silver, and I oppose artificial turf. First of all, unlike the petition that the lady stood up and said has seven hundred signatures, let me point out, you didn't have to be a resident to sign it, and you didn't have to be eighteen years old. We have petition here, on the other hand, with two thousand four hundred signatures from Greenwich residents that oppose artificial turf at Central Middle School. Every signature here is a resident who's eighteen years old and over. I'd like to submit this first of all. Second of all, for three years now, the Board of Education has denied kids at Central Middle School state-of-the-art, well-designed grass fields. The Board of Education has rejected millions of dollars of funding, both from the current and former selectmen, Fred Camilla and Peter Tessie. The question is why? I suspect it's because the Board of Education desires to build a regulation-sized football field for the high schoolers. Let me make the point here. I keep on hearing this whole comment about playable time. Playable time. The field's only got twenty-five hours of playable time. If anybody took the time to read option one of Malone, the grass field they're recommending is a hundred and seventy thousand square feet. Does anybody know what a professional-sized soccer field is? That's sixty-five thousand square feet according to FIFA. So essentially, we are building three fields. Three fields means twenty-five hours per field is seventy-five hours of playable time, as a frame of reference. But professional lacrosse field is only fifty-seven thousand six hundred square feet. A professional American football field is fifty-seven thousand. That grass field is set a hundred and seventy thousand square feet. You can put more than seventy-five hours of playable time if you rotate the field the way it's meant to be done, and it's got proper drainage.
Okay.
Come down there. You can't get three fields on it.
Okay, please.
Twenty-five hours according to Malone. Read the- 25 hours according to Malone, read the survey, you haven't read it.
You can't get three.
Read it.
Okay, please, we're listening to his comments.
And for all of those people, why is it that no major professional sports teams, including soccer, baseball, or even NFL, play exclusively on artificial turf? Yes, in the United States, and after South Africa, we have 31 NFL stadiums of which the majority of them are grass fields, real grass fields. So stop making up this stuff about infantile and all that stuff. Artificial turf has carcinogens, and it's bad for the kids, period.
Thank you. The next speaker is David Rudolph, followed by Jen Duprinsky. I'd like to give my time to Dr. Sarah Evans, please.
Thank you very much. My name is Sarah Evans.
Sarah, I'm sorry, you were signed up later on. If you could please follow the order of the speakers.
He's yielding his time to the speaker.
That's not how we operate, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, we need to follow the order of the speakers as they're signed up.
Are you sure? I'm not there about our speakers.
Name actually was not written on the sheet originally, so we've checked this.
You let the kids do that.
Okay, the next speaker is Jen Duprinsky, followed by Maria. I'm trying, can I try to pronounce again, I'm gonna mess it up.
I want whatever turf I want. My daughter attends G P Ls. I'm really nervous. But, we are not raising children, we are raising adults. I entrusted her to you, she's only in kindergarten. She's vulnerable, fragile, and has very little expressive language. She has autism and inherently has a disability that can manifest in negative behaviors. She's not high-functioning type, but she's kind of in the middle of the spectrum type. This fall, when I began to see her devolve and self-harming at a rate that I'd never seen before, at home, towards objects and towards me, I became very, very concerned and expressed this to her school, that these aggressions were happening at school, I was asking about it, and it was just sort of sugar-coated. I understand my parental responsibility to help her in all facets of her life, yet the money I've spent and hours that I've watched her do such hard work since she's 18 months old, it's all gone. Ms. Jillian, you knew she was potty-trained when she came. It's gone! And you were the best thing she ever had. Anyways, instead, I now have a six-year-old with separation anxiety so bad, that when I pull up to our driveway, just to get the mail, two steps, she screams and tries to get out. She's in a five-point harness, and God knows, I will keep her one for as long as I can. We are not raising adults, and I do not want my child to regress. Multiple times on a daily basis, this is what I hear from my child say, in the last, I would say, four months. Lola makes bad choices. Lola is a bad girl. I'm nothing. I'm zero. Mommy needs to go to the doctor because I hit mommy and I hurt people. Nobody wants a broken doll. Who the hell says that? Lola is broken. It's a bittersweet adventure to have a child with special needs. But, at her diagnosis of 18 months, I've done my best to embrace my responsibility. The truth is, is that you gaslight me, you hide, you have her teachers lie to me, and I am not putting up with it anymore. It's not okay to do it. We're here to work, we're here to work with you, and you deny us that right. I get an advocate because I want better solutions, yet you don't want to educate, you want to litigate. You want your job more than raising children to be adults. I'm done with it.
Thank you. Okay, please feel free to email the board if you want.
Oh, no.
Thank you. All right, the next speaker, Maria, followed by Myra Klackenberg.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Maria Nikolaitchuk, and I am a mom of a CMS student in second grade, but tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of Greenwich Conservation Advocates. We are a grassroots group of residents who live in all areas of town, which supports and promotes local water conservation and water quality protections. Our mission includes protecting open space as a significant element impacting water quality and supply. We are here to support improving and maintaining natural grass fields at all of our schools. Natural grass fields at our schools are open space, which currently provide many benefits in our town, such as stormwater absorption and infiltration, flood prevention, water quality improvement, habitat for soil organisms such as insects, worms, and microbes that improve the soil, and cleaning of the air as all living plants do. In contrast, the lifeless compacted soil under artificial turf and artificial blades of grass can do none of these things. Artificial turf becomes a pollution vector, leaking chemicals into the soil and water, which will result in additional remediation costs in the future. Here in Greenwich, we are painfully aware of the high cost of soil remediation at our schools. We have school fields that are currently sitting unused at Western Middle School and Greenwich High School. It is illogical to use tax dollars remediating contaminated soil at great expense, only to promptly begin contaminating yet again with artificial turf. As you've heard from the Articulate students that were here earlier, the artificial turf includes toxic chemicals. These break down over time and are released into the air of soil and our groundwater. In school areas which do not already have soil contamination issues, the last thing we should be doing is undertaking new projects that will contaminate our school soils and our groundwater below it. We argue that there is a failure of logic and fiscal responsibility to take uncontaminated natural grass fields at Central Middle School by starting a project that's going to create contamination there. We should be looking at other options that are healthy for our kids and for our environment. Therefore, we advocate to improve the natural living grass field. Not only is it better for Greenwich's ecology and quality of life, it is the responsible decision for Greenwich's taxpayers. We support using our tax funds to better manage the drainage and the groundwater infiltration and organic maintenance methods to improve the fields we have for all of our students and the benefit of our entire ecosystem, because we all need clean water. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. All right, so Myra Klackenberg, followed by Elizabeth Dempsey.
Hello. My name is Myra Klackenberg, and I am a resident of COSC. And I'd like to say that this issue of the grass versus artificial turf is a no-brainer. Artificial turf is polluting to create, being a fossil fuel-derived product. It is polluting to use, because it off-gases chemicals when it's new and gets into children's tissues as it degrades. Cancer does happen in our children, and so why expose them unnecessarily? It is polluting to get rid of, because you never really can, and until it is gone, it leaches chemicals into our watershed. Grass, on the other hand, is a living thing that breathes oxygen and sequesters carbon. It cools the air. It is not polluting to create, use, or dispose of, because it is alive. Greenwich need not consider the water demands of grass, because we receive enough rain to float an ark. Indeed, grass can absorb water and slow runoff to our streams. Although grass does require upkeep, there are best practices available for caring for it without chemicals. Yes, grass requires maintenance, which costs money, but maintenance provides jobs and community, and the money we spend is for the long-term health of our residents. After all, we're raising healthy children to be healthy adults. And, as my GHSN reports, it's also much more fun to play on, especially when it's properly maintained. And excuse me, but aren't we facing huge costs, a stated $10 million and upward of maybe $100 million more, to remediate the soil and water around Greenwich High School for similar short-sighted practices that have contaminated the soil and water? Does the left hand know what the right hand is doing? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next speaker is Elizabeth Dempsey, followed by Sarah Evans. That is the last speaker that we have signed up, and then move into the rest of our meeting.
Hi, thanks very much for the opportunity to speak. I'm gonna scrap what I was going to say and go just a little bit off. Kilter, since many people have already voiced the same topics that I have. So, I'm a mom and a resident of Greenwich for 20 years. My two boys played all over Greenwich Fields, including Western before it was locked up, and I know all about sports. My boys were both Division One athletes, so I'm very cognizant of the issue of the need for sports. But in my view, your job first and foremost is to protect our students, and so I would highly advocate for natural grass. It's time we turn the corner in Greenwich. I live across from Greenwich High School, as many of you on the board know, so we have an opportunity here to try to do things the right way. Maybe not, it's not as convenient for all the parents driving to every single game, but we can do this, and as Laura Costin aptly pointed out, there's so many places that we can put in new fields that haven't been used. Just wanted to applaud also Fred Camillo's mention in the budget of remediating Western, just getting those fields back online. Where there's a will, there is a way. I also wanted to point out a technical thing that hadn't been mentioned. I'm not an expert, but my understanding is that turf fields require regular disinfectants. Kids slide, especially on turf, they get bloody. It's part of, a regular part of artificial turf, to be disinfected. Also, you're aware that in Connecticut, there's a law that prohibits anything that's not organic put on our fields. So, I would suggest you build, if you have to build an artificial turf field, that you don't do it at Central, because that violates state law, and I would just have, I'm not an expert, but it's something you really need to consider, because there'd be a lot of people looking at that if you're disinfecting in a non-organic way on a middle school field. And I believe that's why our first selectmen was for natural grass, particularly on elementary and on middle school fields. Thanks.
Okay, I think you all now know that I'm Sarah Evans. I'm not a resident of Greenwich. I have no personal statement or decision, the decision that you all make for this field. I'm just here to talk about the current state of the science related to artificial turf. I have a doctorate in neuroscience and a master's in public health, and I completed a three-year fellowship in environmental pediatrics. And I'm here today to speak on behalf of the Children's Environmental Health Center at Mount Sinai in New York City, where I'm an assistant professor. So we are a collective of pediatricians and independent research scientists devoted to understanding the impact of environmental exposures on children's health and disease. We've thoroughly reviewed the scientific evidence related to the use of artificial turf, and we've concluded that to date, studies do not adequately demonstrate the safety of these products. So it may surprise some of you in this room tonight to hear that that conclusion is echoed by state agencies as well as federal agencies. Although Connecticut Department of Public Health study is widely cited as proof for the safety of turf, the DPH's own 2015 fact sheet, which is available today on their website, states, quote, "The 2010 risk assessment of five artificial turf fields in Connecticut does not provide conclusive evidence about the safety of artificial turf fields. There's still uncertainty and additional investigation is warranted," end quote. Likewise, in 2016, the U S EPA, CDC, and Consumer Product Safety Commission launched a federal study into the safety of chrome rubber. That study's still ongoing, and they stated existing studies do not comprehensively evaluate the concerns about health risks from exposure to tire chrome. And although the focus of that study is on tire chrome, a 2016 U S EPA status report of that study found that research on alternative infills like EPDM, like Envirofill, like TPE, like plant-based materials are, quote, "lacking or limited." So until these studies are complete, the C H C recommends that communities utilize natural grass fields. And I just want to mention what we consider when we think about risk assessment from artificial turf. So the first question is, do these products contain harmful chemicals? We know for chrome rubber that yes, absolutely, they do contain chemicals that are linked to cancer and that are toxic to the nervous system. U S EPA and many agencies and independent studies have shown this. That realization has led to the increase in the use of alternative infills, some of which we've mentioned tonight. These are generated from materials like silica sand, which is linked to cancer and respiratory disease, plastics, which contain hormone disruptors, rubbers that contain many of the same chemicals of concern as recycled tire rubber.
Thirty seconds.
And reported natural chemicals. And although these studies on alternatives are lacking, scientists at Mount Sinai and the toxic use reduction industry have found a presence of known carcinogens and neurotoxins in almost all of the alternative infills that we have examined. Few studies have looked at whether these chemicals get into the body, so that's the next question in risk assessment. U S EPA is studying that now, but that data is not yet available. And the next question that we would ask is whether...
Time.
Okay, so, in closing, I would just like to say that it's the opinion of the Children's Environmental Health Center at Mount Sinai, that conclusive scientific studies have not been conducted, and I have a document that I'll give to you that references my...
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right. With that, we're gonna move on to our monthly reports, starting with the superintendent.
Thank you. For the essence of time, I'll just mention a couple of items. Most of them are actually mentioned tonight. Just letting you know, we will talk more about it during the financial report, but we did put in a freeze on finances yesterday, which what that means is essential spending only, and that really is attributed to that gap that we talked about last month of that kind of 1.2 million, and we are making headway on that, but again, it is essential spending only. So if we have a new course and somebody really needs course materials, they just have to go through the principal and take that to central office. We had our special education devising seminar last night, and so a special thank you to all the people that participated in that, and the board will be seeing a draft of that report, but we hope within the next week, we'll actually have the final format. They had just done the interviews, finished some interviews the day before, so they didn't want to put out the report before they had everybody's comments included. Just on a side note, we did have a safety forum back in November, and you know, as we slowly worked through what some of those challenges were, one of the things at high school was a concern that if kids are out on the fields, end of the day, maybe they don't get picked up, don't have a ride, we don't really have great cell service on that campus, nor do we have internet, so thank you to Mr. Teague and his staff, who just finished putting in internet on the outside and back of the building, so that it's a safer zone for kids now. And I was gonna mention, which Gordon already mentioned, but we did have 20 students that wanted to magnet in, which is, we were very surprised, and actually, he had to have a conversation today about, wow, can we have 20 more students and still absorb it at Western? But that was great news and great conversation. Last but not least, I'll just mention that I did send the board a note today about preschool. And as you know, we're going from 14 sections to 13, which means we had to really analyze which sites are really functioning well, where do we have the most requests? We actually stopped our lottery just to have a little deeper analysis. We were looking at, could we leave one class at Parkway? That is our site that's farthest away. We have a few of students. In the end, for the essence and what we thought was best for children, that program is moving to North Street School. And so Parkway will not house pre-K. That also helps in some regards, just in services, in that now we don't have service providers driving again between those two buildings, which frees up more time, because we can't ask teachers on their planning time to be driving. So I think that's gonna be a benefit for us, but it is a change. That's all for me.
All right. Mr. Sheriff. Mr. Scher.
Tony, I, thank you, by the way, for sending the board the note, notifying us about the change in preschool at Parkway. But it referenced in there the lottery, because I know the lottery's running right about now. And I wasn't clear on exactly where we are with the lottery, so we've taken the, we've taken the applications, correct? Did you say, have we suspended, when were we supposed to finish taking the applications? Do you know?
I might deflect here just for a tiny, we've taken about an extra week and a half beyond what we would normally have done.
Okay. And did we, have we run the lottery yet? Okay, so now we're going to have a...
Parents today.
Okay, I'm going to ask you guys a hard question, which is going to throw a monkey wrench in everything, I'm sorry. I hoped your answer to that was, we hadn't run the lottery yet. Are the rules that are published on our website, the rules you're using this year at New Lebanon?
Is there on the website? Yes.
We have a problem, okay? Because when we put in the sections at New Lebanon, we discussed this last year, okay? There was to be no preference given to people in the New Lebanon catchment zone for the New Lebanon classrooms. And we discussed this last year with you, Mary, and you assured us that you, I asked, who told you to do that? And you said, oh, no one. I assumed that's what it was, because that's how it was in Hamilton Avenue, and the board has never taken action to put those rules in. We took sections out of other schools at Parkway, moved them to, by the way, which were open to the town. We moved them to New Lebanon, closed them to New Lebanon, and the board never took that action when it did that. So I understand this happened last year, but we were given assurances in a board meeting, you can go back and look in the minutes and see it in the tape, that those rules would not be mistakenly applied this year. So I don't know what we've done, but we've essentially closed, we've dramatically reduced by three or four sections, the town-wide pre-K when it got moved down to New Lebanon. So I'm interested in understanding what happened. You guys don't have to answer it tonight, but I want to know what happened, because this was brought up in a prior board meeting, we were given an assurance by the, by the people who run the program. That shouldn't have happened.
Yeah, thank you. I would have to follow up later, because I would have to go back and watch the tape and listen.
Tony, no offense to you, this, you're the one who, unfortunately, once again, new superintendent, catching it, had nothing to do with you if the staff didn't tell you about this. So I'm sorry, I'm dumping the problem on you, and, but I guess that's what you get being the first-year superintendent. I really appreciate hearing about that.
I guess, Peter, I might remember it a little differently. We had a discussion, but we don't actually set the policies for the lottery, so I'd be interested to see what Dr. Jethal's going to talk about.
Anyway, Ms. Stowe.
Different question. Is this working? Whatever.
It's working, just keep talking to it, I will adjust it.
All right, Erin. Okay. Patiently waiting. Tony, a quick question, not that it's a big headline anyway, but STAR, elementary school parent represented here, apparently has been delayed, I don't know, I'm getting a lot of questions. Parents are frustrated. Months, six weeks? Can you tell me what's happening?
I'll speak softly. So I believe that they are actually going out next week, and I'm just looking, I can't, is it tomorrow? Okay, it's tomorrow.
Do we know what happened?
Yes.
What happened?
Yeah, so at the beginning of the year, well, let me put it this way, there were two, there were some students who, like, if they didn't test where the teachers thought that they should have been, and they wanted to retest, what happened in the first pull or upload is that it pulled all the first scores, and so for some of the students, it was not the right score. So we felt it was more important that they be correct, and so they had to redo the whole upload again with Ekris.
What? Can you say that again? What does it mean, they tested, and it wasn't the right score, so they tested again? What does that mean?
Well, I mean, you can have, you can have a child...
I'm sorry, I'm just confused by that.
No, you can have a child who is taking the assessment, and they're not feeling well. You can have a child who needs to go to the bathroom in the middle of the assessment. There are all kinds of reasons. And sometimes it's a student that is, you know, a sixth grader, and they're click, 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 just because they don't want to take the assessment, and you know, the teacher comes and says, I would really like to reassess, because this is going to be important to the family. So they will reassess.
So sorry, that becomes a bit subjective, that becomes quite subjective, right? Because then the teachers say, this student was feeling off this day, or this student wasn't feeling well, or this student went click, click, click too fast, like, where, that then gets into some really gray territory. I thought that was really alarming.
Well, yeah, this is not a state test. We couldn't do that on a state-level test. This is an assessment that is supposed to help guide instruction for teachers that, you know, and if they notice something, and they know a child is sick, I hope that they would come and say to the principal, I really want to reassess this child. And we should be doing that really on almost anything. It doesn't happen a lot, but in the upload this year, it only pulled, if kids had that additional score, they were incorrect.
And that's, was that transparent beforehand, or is that something you just did?
We realized it actually after. Like, they, it had already gone to Ekris, they had done the growth formula, sent it back, it hadn't gone appearance.
Was that transparent, I guess, I don't know if it was on the record, is that transparent beforehand, is it just that, is this normal practice, that teachers will then say, I think this kid, this kid, this kid, this kid could do better, they're going to get a redo? Is that...
I think it's very normal practice, because it's a, it's a universal screener, it's not meant, it's not a state assessment. State assessments are very strict.
But it is being used as placement, correct?
We use it for placement for some things, but it's...
It does track students, yes? It's used for placement, so if you have some students who are saying, I think this student should retake, retake, retake.
Well, we use, we don't use any one assessment for placement for everything. I mean, there's a lot more criteria, multi-criteria.
This is one of them.
This is one of them, and if a teacher feels like it wasn't accurate, we would, we would want to give them that, you know, ability as a teacher to say they want to reassess.
Question. Mr. Kelly.
So it's the teacher that decides whether a kid needs to be reassessed, not outside involvement?
Right, it's somebody that's, that's looking at that score, they know that child, they don't feel like it's accurate, and yes.
Thank you. Ms. Hirsch.
I was going to say, I know that you're discussing that in regards to kids who aren't feeling well and things like that, and it is, as, you know, one of the questions I'd ask, which we can get to when we get to the special education. The monitoring report was about a universal screener, and the answer was that this is being used as a universal screener for students for reading, just to discover reading concerns and issues. So it does concern me if we're giving certain students retakes, you know, if we're finding something, hopefully it's, they're giving that just to confirm as opposed to get a different score.
Yeah, and I think if you would ask staff, that's probably one of the things we don't like about STAR, is it's supposed to be a screener. It's really supposed to just help inform where kids are struggling, and kind of what's happened is STAR has morphed and changed into this parent more assessment, scary assessment, than it is really for the teachers and our children, but there's, it's supposed to be a screener, and it's the number-one screener on the national RTI, on the national RTI database. This is the number-one screener. Because it's fast, and it's not supposed to be diagnostic, it doesn't get into exactly where children are having trouble, but it's supposed to be able to pick up very quickly for a child who is struggling, and then you go to the other assessments that give you the detail that teachers are really looking for, to inform the instruction.
If a child, sorry, if a child is struggling, and a teacher says, I mean, and a teacher says, here, we do this, and then maybe they're struggling just a little bit less, could that then make it this child is not elected towards special education services?
Oh, no, no.
But no, there is a chance that we could be missing the mark here if we're saying, here, we try this, maybe you weren't feeling so great, they do just a little bit better, and it's more, more of our children falling through the cracks.
No, I mean, yeah, a universal screener is really meant just as a screener, and it's not the be-all, end-all, and teachers are using a multitude of resources and information that they're using with children.
Mr. Scher.
Tony, I agree with you. I always understood in the assessment framework that Irene Perici has explained to us, is that STAR is a formative assessment. It was mainly, it was to be deployed internally, really to help teachers understand where students are at various waypoints along an academic year. It was also selected because it was highly correlated to the Connecticut state assessments. The thing I think we kind of veered off into difficulty, so I think what you're saying is correct. I'm not so sure I'm so keen, I mean, we've had discussions in the board before about the over-usage of that test. We discovered that teachers were vastly over-using this thing, which was a surprise to the board. As you know, one of the most important things is for the board not to be surprised. So maybe something, just a little reminder, make sure you don't get surprised. But the more important thing is, it morphed into this thing where we were sending home the assessment. When you send it home, an assessment, and I've said this 100 times, the STAR thing we actually send home, which we select, Renaissance has different ones, we select one that's damn near useless, and we send it home. I understand everything you're saying, maybe the way to solve this is to get on with sending home the learner profile, which we paid for years and years ago, and we've never deployed and never rolled out. Because what parents are interested in, which I think is probably underneath a little bit of what Kathleen is saying, is parents are very interested to get a holistic picture of what's going on with their student in the school. And to send home a STAR assessment which tells me how well I'm doing against kids in Louisiana or Arkansas, really doesn't tell me very much. So maybe we should de-emphasize this, push it back to what it's supposed to be, and speed up, I think you've heard tonight enough, candidly, I'm glad people are showing up at the board saying, what the hell are you people doing? Because we talk about stuff, but we don't get stuff executed. And this is something we've talked about, and we need to move on with getting that done, and it might help solve this problem, so this question, you know, comes up again.
Yeah, and I just said, actually, I had that in my superintendent's report, and I didn't mention, I was just going to put it in my Friday note, but we should have that live within the next two weeks. I was in a meeting today. And the big thing about the PLP is making sure parents know how to log on, so we will be sending out the directions before our next board meeting, we should, that should be out there.
That would be a huge win.
All right, if there's nothing else for Tony, we will move on to reports of officers, committees, and liaisons. Ms. Olson.
So the DTAC Distinguished Teachers Awards Committee, the nomination date, the deadline is March 12th at 5:00 p.m., so we've had a lot of phenomenal teachers and people that work in the district nominated, so please continue to nominate your peers, teachers, and the, that'll be announced on April 22nd, and the award ceremony will be held on May 5th. But the important date right now is, the deadline date is March 12th, 5:00 p.m., so continue to get those nomination packets in our teachers' deserve.
I know we have, Mr. Kelly.
I had the pleasure of filling in for my friend Karen Kowalski in the Food Services Committee just recently. I thought it was a, it's really interesting to be involved in something that probably 100% of the community is behind, the reduction of plastics in our school system. But my only suggestion, in that brief time I had to serve on that committee, Karen, I hope I'm not stepping out of line, she can hear us, that basically, basically, it's important that we support this group a little bit more. In the brief time I was in that meeting, it seemed that we were pushing against them rather than getting behind them and supporting them. So if we somehow have to increase the size of that group, put more firepower on it, let's get more people behind these people, they're doing God's work here, so let's make sure we get it done.
Ms. Stowe.
Okay, now we'll go to board policy after that, which is on agenda for tonight, so we'll just do it then. And then Parks and Rec feasibility study update, we've talked a lot about fields tonight, but I will let you know that next week, our sort of joint task force between the Parks and Rec and Board of Ed will be continuing to work with a consultant on the overall fields throughout town.
Anybody else know a strategic plan coming up? All right, if there's nothing else, we will move on to our discussion items. So the first item is the special education report. That's four.
You have the report, I'm just going to give a general overview of the sections, and then we'll open it up for any questions you have. I did receive about 20 questions this morning. We worked on them today, we tried to get it to you before the meeting, but we just ran out of time. So that will be available to you. The one thing I do want to mention before I get started is, there was an actual error in the report. Some of the numbers got transposed, so I'll give you those correct numbers now, and then you'll see that when I will correct the actual report itself. It's on the page eight, and it has to do with the numbers for the 2015-16 school year. The numbers got transposed when we copied it onto the new report. The number of referrals for 2015-16 by parents should actually be 48, and the number of school referrals should be 135. The big difference is in the numbers of types of referrals. The initial referral should be 171, and the percentage is 78. Consultation, record case review should be 30, and the percentage is 14. And response to private evaluations, pipes was 18. So those numbers got transposed incorrectly when we moved it from the document it was in into the report. I will give you a corrected copy of the report, but just, I hope that answers some questions people have. In terms of the executive summary, I think that speaks for itself. We did look at some areas of investigation that we think the report for next year should focus on, including our compliance with IDEA, the efficiency and efficacy of the programs that we're providing, and I detailed some of the items that I think we should recommend to whomever does that study. In terms of the introduction, our two big initiatives this year had to do with KEY2Ed, and they are the facilitated IEP training. And this is a different way of looking at IEP meetings, which tend to be somewhat bureaucratic sometimes, there's a lot of paperwork, they're not always child-family friendly. So we reinvestigated the facilitated IEP training, which we had done years ago, and we had KEY2Ed come to us, and they were able to do that training again. We traded a team from every school, it was an administrator, a special education teacher, and a general education teacher. People somewhat at the initial part of this questioned, why a gen ed teacher? And our point was that most of our kids spend most of their day in general education settings. So it's really important to us that our general education colleagues are critical members of the team and feel comfortable providing some input in those meetings. We finished that training today. Today was the last day for teams, and we'll spend the rest of this year beginning implementation with some of the smaller components of the facilitated IEP meeting, and then we'll plan for full rollout over the course of next year. The other thing that we were going to do this year was work with UConn on the beginning of a special ed study. Unfortunately, the professor that we were working with got ill and was unable to complete that, but KEY2Ed provided us with an alternative, certainly not a study, but a way of looking at what are the issues that are causing conflict between members of the special education community, meaning school, parents, and staff. And we have finished the second task force meeting last night. We have one more task force meeting in March, and then KEY2Ed will be coming to the March Board of Ed meeting to share the entire process with you. I have to say, it's been, in some ways, difficult, and in other ways, really rewarding. I think the task forces are a really interesting, diverse group of people, and we've had some really good conversations, and I certainly appreciate the time and effort everybody's put into it. I'm not sure it was the pizza, but that may have been what brought them out. The other things that we're doing is that we are continuing, I'm sorry, we initiated... we initiated the Wellness Center this year. So what we did was we took the services and supports that are available throughout the high school and consolidated them in one place at the high school. And that includes our ESS, Effective School Solutions Clinical Social Work Supports, our, what used to be called the Comprehensive Support Program, is now the classes in the Wellness Center that serve both gen ed and special ed students. And our thought was that if we consolidated the services, we could get some efficiency there, but also really start to do case conferencing on some of the more difficult students who present us with our most difficult challenges at the high school. About December, I got a phone call from South Dakota, where someone had been looking at the Wellness Center and asked if it was possible to come visit. Sure. But she said, "Well, maybe we'll just do a phone conference." I said, "Well, yeah, okay." So the reputation of the Wellness Center is getting out. It certainly is providing, I think, a more comprehensive wraparound service to our students with more significant challenges at the high school. We continue with our efforts to get students to participate in their IEP PPT meetings. Our goal is to have every student be a part of their meeting, to share what it is they think they need to learn, how their disability impacts them. We even have our preschoolers come to meetings. Some of them bring pictures, some of them make videos, some of them bring PowerPoints, but they talk about what they think they need to learn, what's hard for them, what's easy for them. And it really, I think, rounds the meetings and who we're talking about. The other change we made this year was we took what we had previously called our special ed coaches, who supported our new teachers and struggling teachers, and refocused them all to become a behavior support team in recognition of the fact, I think some of what you've heard tonight, that we are seeing students with more challenging behaviors. Certainly, we're seeing more students with anxiety-related behaviors. So we redeployed our coaches to become a behavior support team. Each coach now has a school that they're assigned to. In the past, it used to be that they would get assigned as cases came in, which meant that you may have two or three coaches going to a single building, which was A, inefficient, and B, didn't really establish a relationship between the person and the school. So now our behavior coaches are all assigned to schools. We've gotten some really positive feedback from the model. They're also available to do workshops in the schools if they're asked. We continue to train teachers in Norton Gillingham. We are one of the few districts that has the luxury of having a Norton Gillingham fellow on staff. She trains a cohort every year of special ed, general ed, literacy specialists. We're continuing in that work. And the last part is just one of the feel-good things we do. We are one of the districts in Fairfield County that participates in Unified Sports, which is a sports program of typically developing peers and kids with disabilities on a single team. The high school has the largest program. They run three seasons, I believe, soccer, basketball, and track. And Western Middle School has a very robust unified sports team. So those are the highlights. Evaluation teams. Again, we are one of the only districts in, at least Fairfield County, I'm not sure in Connecticut, that uses the evaluation team model. These are people who just do evaluations, and they do all of our initial evaluations. The good news is they become very familiar with the tests and the procedures. We have bilingual staff members as part of our evaluation teams, and they evaluate all students who are initially referred for special education. You see the evaluation team results for the district. The numbers that are not included in this report are our private school numbers. We do usually between 20 and 30 private school evaluations a year. We are responsible for doing the evaluations of any child who attends school in Greenwich, whether they are Greenwich residents or even actually Connecticut residents. The IDEA was changed years ago to include that as a requirement. And it also does not, and that's, those numbers are not included in here. So we are seeing an increase in evaluations. We are also seeing a shift from school-based referrals to parent referrals. Our hypothesis is some of this actually has to do with the STAR assessment. I think sometimes when parents get test results back that seem to be incongruous with what they've been experiencing either through grades or something else, it somehow triggers for them, something may be wrong, and they need to investigate it. So we are seeing a shift to more parent referrals than staff than school. You'll see that in the numbers. And we're also seeing a slight decrease in what we call the positive hit rate, or those kids who've been referred for evaluations who are actually entered into special education. That number is decreasing. Just as an aside, the state has determined that this year we will change the evaluation timeline. It used to be either 60 calendar days or 45 school days. They have gone to just 45 school days. The benefit to us will be that 60 calendar days used to sometimes take us into the summer, and we'd have to do summer evaluations. Now they were only tied to the 45 school day calendar. It means that we will not be doing as many summer evaluations since the timeline will stop at the end of school and pick up again when school begins. Typically, the disability categories that children are identified under have not changed dramatically. Learning disabilities is still our primary area. Service delivery. We staff schools using a staffing ratio, which is determined based on the hours of special education services that each student is mandated for on their IEP. And we look at the total number of hours of special ed-only, not related services, and then create a ratio that goes out to the schools. It's not always a perfect number, and if it's not, we do some adjustments trying to get to full-time positions in every building. We have, at this point, as far as I can remember, right now, we have no staff split between buildings. It's just very inefficient. It doesn't allow teachers to service students when they need those services all the time, if they're moving between buildings, and you just lose time in the car. So we always try to have full-time positions in all of our buildings to the maximum extent possible. Staff are paid for in three ways. They are either paid for through the table of organization. They are paid for through a grant, primarily the IDEA grant. And then the third way is the Project Evolve model, which we continue to use in Greenwich. This comes out of the University of Vermont, which looked at the fact that our students with the most significant disabilities were tending to spend, and this is nationwide, most of their time with professional assistants. And how do we change that model? What we do, school by school, year by year, is determine whether or not the school can trade in three professional assistant positions for one certified staff member. It increases access to a certified staff member, but it does impact on the number of paraprofessionals or professional assistants in the building. Again, that's not a lifelong commitment. Schools make that for the year, and at the end of the year, they decide whether or not they want to do it again based on the staffing ratio. Something that people brought up, which is, an issue that we deal with every year is that we set our staffing sometime in April or May, which is long before the school year starts. And changes happen between May and September, and then they continue to happen all year long. Kids get added, mostly added, and how do we account for that? I tried to give each school at least a .2 or .3 cushion in the staffing so that it accounts for kids moving in, but we still sometimes get to schools where it's a struggle by the end of the year because we've added students and we do not add staff as the year goes on. And I gave you a staffing chart, so you can see how that works. Our demographics have not changed dramatically. We are still probably about 2 to 1, boys to girls, which is not unusual. That tends to be the ratio throughout the country for people with disabilities. We are not, have not been cited for disproportionality in the past couple of years, so we are still within our natural proportions. And we have slipped a little in our time with non-disabled peers. The next section is the District Annual Performance Report. Unfortunately, these reports always lag because they come from the state. Comment was made in one of the questions that we were, low in our percentages. We continue to be on the low end of kids identified compared to other districts, but we are pretty stable across the year, although we are growing. Our certified personnel. We tend to have, and I know this is gonna be hard to believe for people, we tend to have more staff than some districts because we have fewer kids outplaced. So we do serve a higher percentage of our students in district, which makes our staffing ratio a little bit, or the percentage of the budget that goes to staff higher than in other districts. Some of that has to do with the cost of our teachers and our salary schedule, but it also has to do with the fact that we hire staff because we keep more kids in district. We are, we receive something called the Annual Performance Plan, which shows our compliance with federal regulations. We continue to meet state guidelines in everything, except the one thing that we didn't this year was we were making progress on our percentage, our participation rate of secondary students in standardized testing. We met all of our proficiency rates for standardized testing. We met all of our goals for preschool, and actually, we met everything. So, good news. Our college outcomes were good. We actually saw a pretty significant increase of kids who went to four-year colleges this year, who have IEPs. There are some examples of the schools that students went to, including Quinny B X, Syracuse, Mitchell College, which has this very strong program for kids with disabilities. So kids are graduating and making good decisions about whether or not they want to go into college. The next section is IEP mastery data. We count every single objective that every student masters or doesn't master throughout the school year. We did see a couple dips this year in the percentage of students meeting goals, and I'm sure it really frustrated schools because I saw a lot more kids who mastered 79%. And I'm sure that's heartbreaking to a school because 80 is our cutoff. So you'll see some schools that had a smaller percentage of students meeting goal, but they did have a lot of students with 79%. And kudos to the preschool, where every single student in the preschool program met all, met 80% of their objectives or better. Overall, in the district, that was the preschool section. Overall, the district, we had 89% of the stu, average 89% of mastery of goals and objectives, and 83% of the students met their, 80% of their objectives. Next section is on, Mary, unfortunate section.
Mary, given the essence of time, I think some of the board members, they want to stop and start asking questions.
Okay, want to stop now, or just go through?
Yeah, I think, go ahead and stop, because I think they may have quite a few questions.
What, go?
We've got the report, so Ms. Hirsch.
The last section is just the procedural safeguards, and you can see that we compare somewhat favorably to other districts. Okay, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to start off by saying thank you for getting back to us in a short window of time with some of the questions that were asked. I know a lot of those questions were ones that I had sent in before our last meeting with you a few weeks ago, so there should have been time to prepare a lot of those answers. So I would simply like to say I didn't get a chance to read the responses in depth because they came in right before our meeting. So I would like to, when we get to agenda planning, request that we add this back on again with the additional information that we received, especially considering the past four-plus years of monitoring reports that I've read through, including information that we didn't get in this one, that I have requested about mediation and other, you know, school by school, grade by grade information. As I said, you know, I'd like more details in the settlements over the past years. It may not be, while it may not be the most costly in monetary terms, it's certainly the most costly area for our students and community in missed educational opportunities and emotional investment. So it's really important we learn about that. But I think I'd start with, my question for you is in regards to the fact that I didn't see any note here about professional learning for special education of gen ed staff noted in the report, and really like some more information on how much time, how many hours and what programs our general education teachers are getting in professional learning in this department for de-escalation of students when we're talking about behavioral issues. I know Carol Sutton was up here talking about how gen ed teachers are having difficulty handling some situations in class and may need additional staff or training to support that.
We have two different models of professional learning, and I'll ask Irene to comment if she has any additional information. But on the days, the full days are really choice days. So we try to make sure on all choice days, where there are different workshops available to staff, that we have, this year, the Behavior Support Team people offered workshops on things such as behavior management, strategies for dealing with kids with anxiety. The psychologists, social workers, and guidance counselors have access to more in-depth training in those areas. And the behavior support people are available and have done workshops specifically at schools on areas related to behavior. Every, every school has something called an intensive intervention team, which is, a crisis team is required by the state, but we already had a crisis team which dealt with crisis. So we renamed what they would call the crisis team, the intensive intervention team. And all the members of that team are trained in PMT, physical management training, which although it does definitely deal with physical management training, also deals with de-escalation strategies and ways of preventing behavior as opposed to dealing with the behavior when it happens.
Well, it seems to me, just from public comment and hearing from our teachers and parents, that this probably should not be just offered on a choice day. This should be required for all of our teachers. But I do want to ask, you know, one of the questions I had asked was about our three evaluation teams for K-12 and the swing team that we've had in the past. And I noticed your response, it said that with the increased number of evaluation, the teams are struggling to complete requests within the timeline. It leads me to ask a follow-up question as to why we've not heard this before. If we don't have enough coverage to complete requests within the federally mandated timeline, and they are no longer able to attend evaluation meetings because they no longer have time, it really would seem that we should be looking into this. It shouldn't be the first time we've heard this issue.
No.
But more importantly than that, when we're talking about that, one of the other questions I had for you was, if you look back at the past, I don't know, five-plus years of monitoring reports, you know that our staffing model has not been updated in 10 years, that, well, now that would be at least 15. And it also seems to me that that's something that we should consider looking into, considering, I know it has budgetary concerns, but I'd like to sort of see how that's being done. You're talking about hours, and there's one at every school, but it doesn't necessarily seem, you know, for certain different staffing models.
The teacher staffing, we have not really changed the ratio dramatically over the past couple of years. We do discuss it every year towards this time of year at director's advisory with the assistant principals to see if there are other ways of staffing buildings in an equitable way. At this point, we haven't been able to come up with anything that we think is substantially better. We do look at the paraprofessional staffing or the professional assistant staffing differently every year. And we have changed a couple things and a couple ways that we look at the way we allocate PAs to buildings. What we found was that sometimes kids were getting special ed service hours added because the paraprofessionals were needed for things that were not necessarily directly related to goals and objectives, but the students did actually need additional support, usually for things like management in the building and things like that. So we changed the ratio and then added a, an allocation of pairs based on the size of the building, that the building can use in ways that they think best meet the needs of the kids in the building, not necessarily directly related to the implementation of goals and objectives.
Mr. Sher.
Yes, thank you.
Mary, can you, well, I appreciate Peter recognizing me. I wanted to talk about this thing of paraprofessionals, because I need a point of information. Tell me exactly what a paraprofessional is and what their job is as it relates to special education.
They are actually, I slip into this, their title is actually professional assistant. And they are there to assist in the implementation of the special education program for students.
Okay, so give me, give me a really specific example of what they tip, go for the sweet spot. What are they used for?
You may have a student who's been working on some attention goals with the psychologist, and they're developing strategies to keep themselves focused in a classroom. A paraprofessional may be in the classroom so that when the student starts to lose focus, they would remind them to use their strategy.
Is this typical? Is that the most typical example? I'm very familiar with paraprofessionals being there for kids who are particularly... handicapped, let's just call it, particularly handicapped. So, that's, that's a pretty typical implementation of a paraprofessional. I'm trying to think beyond that. There's, there's a reason I'm trying to, I'm going to ask this in a second, because I'm trying to connect it to the data that you provided.
To the?
Data that you provided. I'm trying to, trying to understand the connection of what a paraprofessional does, because they're not, they're not a certified teacher, right?
They, they should not be the person doing the direct instruction of the specially-designed instruction that kids are getting.
Is a speech specialist a paraprofessional?
No, no.
Is a reading specialist a paraprofessional?
No.
Okay. So, Mary, the thing that I, I struggle with, and I think this is right, right? And I'm where, I'm where Mrs. Hirsch is, right? Ms. Hirsch, I should say, whatever. I know how to spell your name now properly, thank you. By the way, I think our executive session, let me just underline this, I think our executive session, where, because we're the board, is the local education authority, and we delegate our authority down through the superintendent to teachers, because you guys have no authority on student data, except through us. I thought it was remarkably helpful to have that session to dig into settlements and, and the rest of it. It was very illuminating. I found, and by the way, I want to thank you guys for doing it, it expanded my knowledge dramatically on the subject, so that I could think, as one of eight board members in our role in policy, what adjustments we could do to help support the program. I hope, and I think there's a hunger for the board, I know there's a hunger of all of us, to dig into this much more deeply. It's, it's like pulling on a string, and the more you pull, you just need to pull more. And I, this isn't going to change. So, coming back to this, the thing I'm, and we had in that discussion, a discussion about delivery models, and the most modern, effective way to deliver special education for efficacy for kids, right? It was about effectiveness, and it wasn't about compliance. I know you guys want to talk about compliance, the board doesn't want to talk about, the board wants everybody to be 100% compliant, but we don't want to talk about compliance. We want to talk about outcomes for kids. So, I see here on page 14, right? This is a summary of, of special education in Greenwich Public Schools. We have 1,073 kids who are getting special education services, 969 of them are not pre-k. Okay, so these are people in what everybody else knows as elementary, middle, and high school, right?
And 12-plus.
And 12-plus, thank you very much. We have some kids at 12-plus, right? But that is broken out here. Then you have students by disability, right? Important data. Big categories, ADHD, right, other, it's called another health impairment, speech and language impairment, right? Learning disabilities, which is dyslexia, which is, I know, because we've asked for this before, because I asked for it before, I'd love to get it again. We had a chart in a prior report where it was broken down in more granularity exactly what the primary disability is, but this is close enough for government work. That's 400, 600, 800 kids who were in those three categories. Now, the thing that is an interesting crosswalk is time with disabled peers. It says 80, 70, essentially 80% or more, only 20% of their day, these are kids are getting special education services, that number is also 800. So, the vast bulk of students, according to this data, unless you could tell me otherwise, are kids that are not necessarily being served by paraprofessionals. What they need is, they need language, they need executive functioning, they need, your point was time on task, focus, so on and so forth. They need reading, intensive reading, because they have reading issues, they have coding issues. The, and by the way, they're not sitting around with a paraprofessional all day long. They're sitting in your regular classroom, and they're pulled out, or maybe they got some intensive therapy along the way. The reason I say that is, is that it seems to me, that to Ms. Hirsch's point, most of this delivery is done not by paraprofessionals, not in separate rooms, it's being done by certified teachers. And then, for us to have a, and I've seen our catalog on professional development, fair warrant, fair, fair to say, the board has not been able to fund in that prior year, that's a decision that got made one year, now the superintendent tells, nope, it's okay, we don't need to put that funding back, we need to redo that program. But I've seen that catalog, and what jumps out in that catalog, it's like our high school catalog that we just put in. It's like a college catalog, it's like my son just called home and registered for his classes at UCLA for the next semester, and it's like, what, he's picking what to get. It seems to me, if we've got all, this is a punchline, if we've got, most of this delivered by teachers, most of it delivered by regular teachers, against the vast bulk of things that we need, those teachers have to have mandatory training supplied to them in a really intensive way. And we, we, we don't, we don't need to wait for next year's review to figure something like that out. Now, I'm not a real smart guy. You might tell me otherwise, say, Peter, there's a bunch of information you're completely missing here. And I'd love to be educated more, as I said again, but it, it seems to me, we have to take some actions if we're going to have this kind of program, that get us maybe a little back to basics, get us a little more focused, so we can deal with that. Now, by the way, I am heartbroken, and anybody who serves on this board is heartbroken, to hear the story of, I'm sorry, I've forgotten her name, she's still here, to hearing about her daughter. That's a whole different class of child with a whole different set of very focused needs, and I know that in your, you guys spend a lot of time focusing on that, and we need to focus on that, because those are the kids that are the most vulnerable, most greatest in need. But while we're doing that, we can't highlight that and not focus on this 80, 85% that's at the core of what jumps out of this page. Just tell me if I've read this wrong, or, or is there something I'm missing?
Here's what I will tell you. I think one of the most positive moves we made was our move towards personalized learning. Because what personalized learning really, at its core, asks you to do is to look at each student individually and meet their needs as best you can. So, when we're talking about providing different ways of learning, providing different ways of accessing information, all of that really does support students who learn differently in a classroom. So, I think we are better than we've ever been at incorporating strategies for kids with disabilities into the content and instruction that we give our gen ed teachers. So, for those large amount of students with what we refer to as the high incidence disabilities, learning disabilities, ADHD, speech and language, many of the teaching strategies that they need are good teaching strategies with, which most of our gen ed teachers.
Well, I'm sorry, high incidence, you mean just, there's a lot of kids who have it?
Yeah, it's a high, there's a lot of them.
There's a lot of them.
As opposed to a low incidence disability like traumatic brain injury, where we only have two or three kids with that disability. So, I do think the answer to a lot of what you're asking is in how we support and train gen ed teachers for all kids. Because there are kids with, who are slow readers, who are not in special ed, that if you give other options in the classroom, all kids benefit. I think what you're referring to, and we struggle with, are those kids with the more significant disabilities, whose learning is dramatically different than other kids. And yeah, we would love to have more time for professional learning just around those kids. I will tell you that the one thing that came out of our task force meeting last night was, time is our biggest resource and our biggest enemy in some cases. It's, where do we get the time? You know, when you're changing to NGSS, new science standards, you've got a teacher who's got to learn the new science standards. We sometimes get in those positions of, where do I spend my, my staff development day? Teachers are asked to make choices, a lot of times where we didn't have to ask them to make those choices. I think some of the best staff development can happen at the building level, when you have smaller groups, when you're talking about individual and real kids. And I hope that our behavior support coaches can spend more time at the building doing that, but staff development time is golden, we'd all have to have more of it.
Dr. Jones, I think you wanted to add something?
Yeah, just a couple of points before we get too, too many questions down the road. I, I do think that the staffing model is something that we have to look at, and I feel like the model we've had is, and I, and I, and we were just in this discussion, I think yesterday, about the staffing model. And I will say, you know, one of the exercises we've done with our administrative team is really, we've done two different exercises this year, we've looked at what's really working well, where are the challenges, and one of the things overwhelmingly that all of our administrators also put on the table was our staffing model. So, I think we're going to have to come together and go back to the table. The other thing I would say to what you were commenting on, Peter, is, yes, training is really important, and that's only one piece, but I think it looks different in elementary, middle, and high, and there are, there is no one solution, it's really a multitude. And I'll give you an example. A gen ed teacher can have all of the training in the world and be highly skilled, but if they're sitting in a high school class with 26 children, and 18 of those children have an IEP, and some of those children are still, they have a writing disability, they can't write, and there's no parent to really assess them or to, to help them, or they struggle to read, and then you have another student whose skill level is on high school level, they're all in the same room, and it's just we're asking, in some of our situations, it's unrealistic, what we're asking, so I think it's a multitude.
So, first, I'm still a little bit baffled, Mary, by your role and key to ed in all of this, because I know that, and that you're presenting this, because I know we don't have our teachers observe their own classes and evaluate themselves, so, because there'd be implicit and explicit bias, so I, I guess that's more of a comp than anything, but I'm a little baffled that you're the one presenting this. Thank you very much to the brave young woman that got up and spoke about her daughter. You know, I've heard that, that, that was the most powerful speech I heard tonight of everything that's covered, and I've heard over and over again, the story of gaslighting, litigating, fear of retaliation, teachers are afraid. I've heard people say to me, teachers are afraid of Mary Ford, they're afraid of retaliation from Mary Ford. Haven't really heard it from Dr. Jones, but I've heard they're afraid of what Mary Ford will do. So, I know that there are people that are afraid, administrators, I mean, of administration. We heard, I think, just not that long ago, from someone who actually also quit teaching in the Greenwich Public School system because her daughter was in special education and was afraid of retaliation. So, this is a story, you spoke for many people, so thank you for your bravery and your honesty, and unfortunately, it's the truth. Personalized learning, I don't think is the answer. It was described tonight as a digital experiment, that's what it is. So, giving students with needs of all kinds of special needs a, a device is, is not the answer, so I have to disagree with you on that as well. The, I agree with what Mr. Scher said, the vast bulk are not being served by paraprofessionals. Our general, general education teachers do need training, they need mandatory training. And then, I do have some questions here as well, a lot of that was just, thank you to her and some comments.
I just want to clarify, though, personalized learning is not about devices.
Partially it is. Partially it is. I also have a couple of questions. On page 33, I want to see if I read this correctly, on 33, it says that, the positive social emotional skills, it says that in Greenwich Public Schools, of the children of preschool, it's the preschool corner, I think, over here, of the preschool, 100%, 100% of our preschool children, percent who substantially increased their rate of growth by the time they turned six years of age or exited the program, positive emotional, social emotional skills, 100%. Do we do, and then we hear of children getting to kindergarten and saying, I'm a bad child, I make bad choices. Do we, do we do think sheets in preschool? Because I know we did think, I call them shame sheets, but I know we did think sheets for a while, it may have been done away with in the elementary school. Do we still do think sheets? Do you know what think sheets are? Think sheets, think sheets, I call them shame sheets. I'm just curious if we do those in, in a preschool program?
No.
We don't. And, and yet, and yet, here we have 100% social emotional, and then we have students get to kind, 100% social emotional positive skills, and we get to kindergarten, and children are wetting themselves and, and scaling backwards, so.
But it's like a month or so.
Right. So, it's, so, right, so that, I'm just, I just wanted to point that out. I have another question about data. This one, it said that Old Greenwich School reached 100% growth.
What page was it?
I mean, on page, not 33.
Oh, page 22.
22?
Means that 100% of the students at Old Greenwich.
Yeah, so, Old Greenwich, and, right, oh, page 22, Old Greenwich, percent of students meeting goal 2018 to 2019, 100%. That's in 2018 to 2019, and I, I remember, because it wasn't that long ago, hearing from, from parents at the podium, that that was actually the school where the administrator was, was giving answers to, to help pass a test. So, that's, I, I find it odd that the, of the one, the one school that reached 100% growth.
No, that's not 100% growth, that's.
100% meeting goal, sorry, 100% meeting goal, I didn't mean growth. 100% meeting goal was the same school where students were helped on the test, so that's, irony, I'm not sure.
This means that 100% of the students.
Met their goal.
Met 80% of their objectives.
Right.
100% met, met.
The goal is.
Met their goal.
The goal is that students will meet 80% of their objectives. At Old Greenwich in 1819, 100% of the students met 80% of their objectives.
Right, and I, I have trouble trusting, and that's significantly higher than every other elementary school, and I have, I'm having a little trouble trusting the validity of that number, considering this is the school where the administrator was helping, helping a, helping students meet their goal, and here it says 100%. So, I'm, I, I've questioned the validity from the get-go, but this is, this number seems strangely devised to me. So, I'm having a little trouble with this, reconciling that that is the same school where there was an administrator giving answers. And that's all I've got for the moment, but I'm sure I have more questions in a moment, if other people have a chance.
Yes, sir. Actually, Karen Kowalski, did you want to say anything, or are you, or wait?
Karen?
Yeah, no, I'm sorry.
Can you hold down the thing for us?
I, I have, I have some question, I have some additional questions that I, I think is best, you know, I want to continue to go through, as Karen had mentioned, all the additional material that have been sent to us, and I think, and I agree with her, and I concur in her position, that this should be added again, as, I don't think the board has had enough time to digest the additional information that's been given to us.
Any more on the special ed part, because we have the people from the community connections in preschool here?
Yeah, I actually have got a little bit, Mary. So, so first, one of our former board members said, lead with the positives, so kudos on the Welcome Center, good idea, glad you were able to do it. I know you had asked for funding, we didn't have funding to give you, but glad to see that you were able to solve that problem. That said, this monitoring report repeats the question that was in the last monitoring report submitted two years ago, and it was designed to answer this question, this is what your monitoring report executive summary says. Is Greenwich providing IDEA services to students with disabilities that are compliant with the requirements, effective in meeting the requirements, efficient in the delivery of services, or sufficient quality to meeting the individual needs of each students? You know, I'm really not convinced that's the right question, I wasn't two years ago, I'm, I'm less convinced now that this is the right question. I think based on the data that we've seen, based on the anecdotal, based on what we've heard from, from the teachers, I, I think the answer to this is no. I think the question is even more basic than that. Are we properly serving the students in the best way possible? And I can't answer that as a yes, I really can't. I appreciate the fact that you've, you've provided some guidance on what you think ought to go into a special education review. I'm hoping Dr. Jones gets out of this feedback from the board as to what that review ought to look like. We've got money in our budget for it, while it's nice to have your input, we're going to be reviewing your department, that's going to be an independent review. But again, I'm going to come back to it. Compliance, efficacy, efficiency are not the right measures of how we're serving students. Compliance is a minimum standard, but actually, I, I live in compliance, it really is, are we meeting the minimum standard? That's not what we want for these kids. You know, I've said it before, this isn't just a legal obligation, it's a moral obligation. Efficacy. Efficacy really doesn't tell the whole story. That word just bothers me in terms of students. Efficacy is something you talk about in terms of drugs, are these drugs effective? This isn't effective for students. Efficiency is very focused on saving money. I've heard you say it before, you know, prior meetings. This board, though, has never given you, in the time I've been on, and I think Peter's same, we've been around a long time, we've never given the direction that this is about saving money. So if there is a need, the expectation is, we're gonna hear, there's a need, we need to ask for money. We shouldn't be hearing that from the parents, it shouldn't be the teacher union saying, it should be the program coming to us and saying, "Let's do this." So I truly believe the simple question of are we best serving our students is where we need to go. I really hope that this review that we do next year, and this is to Dr. Jones, will really be a soup to nuts review, all the way from identification to providing the services, to how those services are measured, to are the goals the right, you know, the right thing and the plans for the students, who's responsible for monitoring them, all the way through to can we actually exit kids from the program? Are they successful? If 800 of our kids have a disability, are we serving them to the point where we can actually graduate them? Look to our ESL program as a model. Some of those students that are in our program for ESL are also in your program. There's a significant overlap, we've heard that time and again. And yet, those students are able to graduate from ESL, but they're special ed forever. And I don't think that's right. So I really.
Can I just interrupt you, Peter?
No, Mary, I'm gonna keep going, because I'm the chair and I have the gavel on the floor. You know, I sit and I listen, training and support. So training by choice, that's great, I love that we offer things. The problem is, when we offer a plethora of options, and I've sat through the grand tang math, it's great, but you know what? Am I gonna pick special ed over that? Probably not, because I want to improve the math student, math scores of the kids in my room. We're gonna have to find a way, hopefully working with, with the GEA, to find a way to best support our teachers and making sure they have the training. And to staffing, this one boggles my mind. You're talking about it now, Mary, we built the budget for next year already, it's a little late to be talking about staffing. One of my last pet peeves, and I'll take a break after this, Evolve. This is a program that has bothered me from time immemorial. Every time we ask for it, we get a different explanation, it's for kids, now we make the decision early, but we don't know who the kids are yet. Time for this program to go. If we have a need for paraprofessionals, stop trading them in for teachers, we could use the paraprofessionals, it is time to figure this out. It's been too late. I really have a high hope that we will get a quality review of our program, a understanding of best practices, and a true action plan for implementation. We need to change the culture of how we do this. I think Kita Ed's interesting, but it is one tiny little sliver of the entire program, and I really think we need to step back and take a big look, and that's what I'm hopeful Dr. Jones is going to do.
I just have to say, people who are in the ESL program are people who don't speak English as their first language. The expectation is that they can learn a second language and then they no longer need those services. When you're in special education, you've been identified as a person with a disability. It's not a, it's a lifelong disability, that's what you have, and we're here to try and give you specially designed instruction to learn compensatory skills, to teach you a different way, but there's not an expectation that if you learn something, you are no longer a person with autism. You are still a person with autism.
Mary, I understand that point, but there are students who have learning disabilities that if we gave them the skills that we need and the supports that they need, could actually grow. And I fear that we aren't doing it in a way that's attractive to them. Thus, we lose students to certain specialized schools in the area, and they do come back after a couple of years because they've gotten the skills that they need. Why are we not doing that here?
We have students that we do exit if they no longer meet the criteria. We also have students who go off to special schools and then return to Greenwich as children with disabilities who require special education services.
Okay, all right. Mr. Scher.
I just want to make one other comment about the budget. We are not an island, we are part of the Greenwich Public Schools. And when the Greenwich Public Schools get a budget allocation, we work as part of a team to come in with the budget that you ask us to come in with. Everybody in the, every department in the Greenwich Public Schools makes decisions so that we can hit the budget guideline that we are given. And sometimes we have to make choices, and I'm sorry that we have to make choices.
Mr. Scher.
Mary, I'm like a broken record on special education, and I, I, this is for, this is for Tony, too. Okay, this, this, look, we, by any measure we have, contrary to the, look, the GAs here, what's their job? Their job is to get more staff. I fully expect the union president to stand up there and talk about getting more staff. That's what she's supposed to do. That's why her members come and clap. I get it, okay? That's exactly what she's supposed to do, get more jobs for her local. She's gonna come up there and stand up there every single time we let her, and that's exactly what she's gonna tell us. It's not, it's, it's not new, okay? But, and we like to talk about 2% and what have you, right? Okay? Which is, if you know anything about our budgets and costing, which most of the public doesn't, okay? They don't actually understand what's going on. By any measure, we are the most richly funded district in Connecticut. There's a hun, how many are there? 134, 140 districts? We're number one, far and away number one in what we spend. What your organization spends as a percentage of the budget, Dr. Jones, who is also responsible for this, is a huge percentage of our budget. We have to be willing, and it's got to start with the administrators, because the board, the board shouldn't do it. Our job is to set policy, our job is to represent the public. We hire a CEO and staff to manage based upon what we communicate. We take in what you tell us about what's possible and not. Big message. And I, I just get tired of sending it. Every, every single year, this, I've been on this board 10 years, okay? I can remember having this exact conversation with, who's the, I even forget, rotating the door of superintendents, the one that was with us for 30 seconds and then disappeared to Utah, okay? I said in that very meeting in Hamilton Avenue, "Please, stop sending me a report that's about compliance. Could we start getting a report that's about how we can improve together, board working with the administrations, special education services, so that the outcomes are closer to what kids need and what parents want?" I, I just, I feel like I'm having the same conversation over again. Mary, I'm begging, I'm begging. Hold on, hold on, stop.
What do you want me to tell you?
What I want you to do is take in what you're hearing from the public, take what you're hearing from the board, be willing to sit down with teachers, and you know what? I recognize that people, I've talked to special education people in Connecticut, they all, it's a little community, they all think you're fantastic, okay? I, I can't reconcile what I hear from parents day in and day out, and what I hear from teachers and day in and day out, and what I hear from the echo chamber that is special education in Connecticut, the experts. It frustrates me to no end. But here's the thing I'm asking, tear up the model you have, okay? Go start over and say, "Here's the good stuff that's working, here's the stuff that's not working, the board will have your full permit, will give full permission and support." But for us to keep coming to a meeting where the same meeting is, "PERS and Evolve and teacher training, we provide a catalog, and we're serving most of these kids, and the compliance, as Megan just said, is 100% in, in, in Old Greenwich," I mean, it, it's just, it's a very, very frustrating thing. And Tony, Mary can't do this alone, this has to be done, she's right. It has to be done with the people that report to Anne, it has to be done with, I'm sure there's some curricular element to this thing, it has to, this is a team sport. But I will tell you, I, if someone were to ask me, "What are the two or three, two, you only have two, most important things in Greenwich Public Schools right now?" This one is, if it ain't my number one, it's definitely my number two. It, it just, we, I want you to do it, because if you don't do it, then we're gonna have to bring in people from the outside who don't understand Greenwich, don't understand the context, and they're gonna come in and do it. I'd rather it's done internally with the staff, based upon what everybody knows about Greenwich, but this model, and I tried to show it to you in a simple way, 800 kids and we're, we're worried about putting every kid in a neighborhood school, you go talk to parents. I said this the other time, I'm gonna say it one more time, and I'm gonna shut up, because I'm done with my rant, okay? There are 50 families who write a check and send their kids outside of Greenwich just to get their kids to deal with reading and coding disability. They don't come to us, they don't try to sue us for the money. They said, "You know what? I'll just go write the check myself, because I'm more interested in the kid." We should be ashamed of that, that someone felt like they had to get up and leave Greenwich Public Schools, because we couldn't serve their kid. We just happen to live in a place where there are enough people with enough money, they can go do something else. But that doesn't mean it's right. And we need to, we need to figure something else out so they don't do that, because I believe what you said. You looked, you said it the other day, when we were in the meeting, it was a little more powerful things you said. We have to look at it as a failure if someone bails out of public Greenwich Public Schools. That has to be our, that has to be the way we think about the world. And, so our criteria has to be, there's no reason for anybody to bail out.
Missed out.
Okay, and an attempt to summarize, because I feel like we're all circling around the same issue. It's, for once, and I remember I'm the finance person on the board, it's, it's not about the budget, because, Peter, as you pointed out, and I asked Sean right before this meeting, we spend nearly 22% of our budget, so let's think about that, nearly a quarter of our budget, on 11% of our population. So it is, it is not about money, we have to do something differently with the money that we have, because obviously, we can't, throwing money at it is not the answer, it's probably changing the model. And it seems that, Tony, you seem to have some ideas, so I'm excited about that, and one of the reasons we hired you, because you seem to really know what you're doing in special education, it seems like you've started that process, it seems like this is the beginning, Kita Ed was the beginning, but we have to obviously do a huge independent audit, which thankfully, we're getting the financing for, hopefully from the BET. So I just want to, you know, I just want to say that this is the beginning, there's a lot more to come, and it seems like the eight of us are actually all circling around the same concerns.
Just also, just so you know, that percentage is special ed PPS. So that includes guidance counselors, social workers, psychologists, who serve all kids, not just kids with disabilities.
Absolutely, but it's, it's, you know, for once, I don't think we're hearing about the budget being the issue, I actually don't think that's the issue, because there's certainly plenty of money going in this direction. I think that we have, it's change of allocations.
You have to persuade through Evolve and show us this is the case. Ms. Hirsch.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I'll table the countless questions on detail and process and training that I have, and just say this, it is very clear that we need systemic change. It is very clear that this is not necessarily about funding. We have, our mandate here is to make the best decisions that we've had for the 9,000-plus students in this district. And a lot of the services that we offer are used by students who have 504s and IEPs and need specialized learning, as well as students who do not, who have not necessarily even been identified yet, or students who are just, are struggling enough in class and getting by and don't have 504s or IEPs. We still need to make sure that all of this, every bit of training that we give to every single teacher in our district, will help support every student and every educator. It is clear that we need to make change, and I really do hope that when we get this back on the agenda again, and I hope it is soon, once we digest the information gotten in our questions, that we can have a deep discussion on that.
Ms. Wilson.
Mary, I'm not even sure I still have a job, but just put that out there. The question is, no, I, I really, I, no, because the question, we're asking questions like, we're in, like, are we in compliance? And I mean, I speak frankly, like, we're not in compliance. And I, I am still, I'm still stuck on the question a minute ago where you compared ESL to a disability, and if someone has ADHD or executive, if someone has ADHD, you can teach them executive functioning skills, and they don't always, and, and it doesn't mean that they have to necessarily always continue to have services, for instance, or if somebody has, and this, this was mentioned a while ago, you can give them educational tools and therapy to then circle back into our schools. And people are writing checks and they're going elsewhere, and something, something needs to be done. I mean, I, I don't have a problem saying, 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 saying it like it is, I just, this is a really big issue. Like, we hear people come out and pour their guts out, and, and we are failing to meet the needs of a lot of our students. And, and you're at the helm of it, and so I'm, I'm at a loss. But I, I'm looking forward to getting more questions answered, and I am grateful that we're going in the direction of having a more serious audit, so that we can, and I am hopeful that the BET is gonna help fund this, because it's not about money, it's about our students, and it's about kids, and how they, their learning, their emotional needs, how they feel about themselves, it's all connected, folks. So I'm gung ho, let's, let's, let's dig deeper, because there's a lot to discover.
Ms. Kowalski, I don't know if you've had anything you wanted to add.
Yeah, I, I, I do, look, Mary, you have, I think, the toughest job in Greenwich, because you are trying to work with the children who have, you know, the most struggles, and we need as board to come together and figure out how to fix this, and we should not be looking at, you know, the, the fact of what successes we have, I think we need to be looking at all the children that we're just servicing, and we just. The system is broken, the system needs to be fixed. We are just, we are doing a complete disadvantage to a whole host of children. And while we look at, you know, our district debt average is, you know, those meeting are 83%, well, 17% are not, what are we doing for them? That is where we're failing, and we need to look at those numbers, and we need to understand how we can better address those issues. We need to revamp this program, we need to break it down from the very beginning and build it back up again, and we should not be touting any part of this as a success, because until we have 100% of our children meeting those goals, we are not succeeding, we're failing.
I think there's probably additional questions, it's, we'll digest the materials that were provided today. If people have additional questions, I would suggest sending them to the superintendent, and then there's a request to add this back to be back on the agenda for later date, we will do that. Any other comments?
I just wanna, I'm gonna make an editorial comment, and I'll probably get in trouble for this, but I'm gonna say it anyway. I would really appreciate if you would temper some of your words about failing, because we have a couple hundred teachers and paraprofessionals out there every day who are working very, very hard for kids. And to have people keep saying, "It's broken, it's failing, it's awful," is really, I think, hard for them to hear over and over again, because they are the ones working with kids who really do think they're succeeding, and they really do think they're doing right by kids. So I just ask you to think about your language a little bit, because what you say does impact them.
Hold on, Karen.
Wait a second.
Go ahead, Ms. Hirsch, and then we'll come to you, Ms. Wilson.
I, I just wanted to say that I don't think when we're saying something, the system is necessarily broken, and we're speaking at, in the negative towards our educators, we're hearing from our educators who feel in some ways that they're not getting the support, and they feel in some ways that is the case as well. I think I personally said I'm speaking in support of making sure that our educators are getting exactly what we need, and I've said it before, we have a lot of special education teachers in this district who are doing an amazing, amazing, amazing job, and we hear it day in and day out. There are a lot of kids that are served very well by our program, but until 100% of our students in our district, whether they have, receiving services or not, are being, are moving forward, we're not, we're not doing our job properly. So it's not, so we're saying, we're failing in the fact that not every single student is getting what they need, so, or not every educator is getting what they need either to support their students. So I want to just make it clear to our educators, we're not suggesting that, that that's a, that's a concern, that they're failing in any way, and that, or.
Ms. Kowalski.
Yeah, no, I think, I want to reiterate Karen's comments, and that's what I was going to say. Our educators are doing a fabulous job within the resources they have, and they are advancing a lot of children to the level that they need to get. But we as a board, and we as a community, cannot be satisfied until that number increases. And we as a board... And we, as a board and as a community, need to put forth the resources that need to be there in order to make sure that the children that are not getting those services and that are not succeeding and not meeting their full potential are. Because that's what we are failing as a community. Our teachers are working hard, there's no doubt about it. I have, I've been in the schools, I've seen those teachers work, they're not getting the resources, and we need to be providing them to them in order to succeed. Because until those a hundred percent of our children are succeeding, then we are failing, we're failing as a community, and we're failing as a board. And we need to provide those resources to those that are providing services to our children.
Peter, do you want to add something?
No, I'm good. That's kind of an explanation.
All right, with that, again, submit your questions to the superintendent.
By the way, Peter, is this something, so we don't lose mojo on this, when we get around to agenda planning?
Oh, it's already on.
Maybe we should see if we can do it soon?
Yeah, well, I know we're.
I know we're kind of jammed up, but it'd be great if we could do it soon.
We're getting the key to Ed report in March, so maybe following that would make some logical sense. And I've got that noted. All right, so we'll move on to our next agenda item, I've gotta go back and find my agenda, it's been so long. Strategic plan update, so I don't know, Peter, if you want to take the lead on that?
You don't, preschool and community connections?
Oh, sorry, Mary.
Oh, wow, okay. Do we have, what do we need?
Preschool? Yeah, I said my piece on preschool.
You have the preschool report, you have Amy and Carlene, you're here to, come on up if they have any questions. Our preschool program is highly successful, very desirable. We have every year way more applicants in the lottery for people who want to be in the preschool classes than we have spots. The difficulty with preschool is every year, as we've explained, we have to admit kids when they turn three. So throughout the year, we're adding children throughout the year, which makes it a little hard to manage in terms of who we're getting, but we do keep adding classes every year. And it's, we try not to do that mid-year. So this year, we're hoping to be able to make it to the end of the year with our fourteen. We've got a couple of classes that are going to six students with disabilities. The preschool has met all of the state benchmarks for their developmental milestones. And if you have any questions about the preschool, Amy is here to answer them.
Anybody have any questions about preschool? We appreciate your being here, I think, given everything else that's going on. I love the preschool program.
Thank you.
We wish we had more preschool program.
So do I.
I'm so sorry, you stand.
We appreciate your being here.
The other program is community connections, it serves our students whose IEPs call for them to attend school after their class graduates. Almost all of these students walk through graduation with the class that they've gone to school with, and then enter the program from eighteen to twenty-one. It's primarily a community-based program, the kids are on job sites, they do some work at some of the local universities, and they do attend classes and receive related services, but that's a small part of the day. Carlene is the person who wishes to go back.
Mary, I just have a quick question about that. Where's, how's this year, where's it going next year?
This year, it's currently at St. Catherine's, where it has been for the past several years. Next year, it's going to be at Bank.
And I know that the students take the bus and the, like, the public transportation, is there good public transportation for the students?
Yes, we have been looking into that to ensure, we're actually pretty excited about being on that part of town, because it gives us access to a whole new group of vendors that we can work with and community that we can work with. We are already investigating some of the local shops around. We're always looking for more and more job sites, because we really want to meet the students' interests. So this is gonna give us a whole plethora of new opportunities, we're pretty excited about it, and we like the location.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Chair.
Can we back up to preschool? By the way, for those of you on the board, it was like, what the heck was that kid talking about? Turn to page thirty-two. I don't understand these, a number of children. I don't understand this certified staff. What is this top category on this page, page thirty-two? No, I know, but it says certified staff, are these the children of certified staff?
Yes, from the lottery.
Are they town residents or non-town?
I would have to tell you.
This makes no sense.
Actually, I would have to go through the seven of them.
See, for those of you who thought I was crazy before, just so you know, the preschool program has always had two components to it. It had a townwide program, and it had a special program available for residents of Hamilton Avenue, okay? What happens when you're a resident of Hamilton Avenue, the preschool there is, if you live in that area, you get to go to that, you get in that, like it's your own private lottery just for your neighborhood, okay? I don't know how that happened, but it's been in place a super long time.
It was part of the magnet.
The rest of it, the rest of it was available to all residents equitably across the town. So you might have gotten placed at Old Greenwich, or you might have got placed at North Street, or you might have got placed, but you had a free shot from the other rest of the town for preschool. What happened is, we took preschool out of Parkway and built classrooms at Hamilton Avenue, okay? And, I'm sorry, at New Lebanon, moved them down to New Lebanon.
We added classes also.
I understand that. But when we did that, right, when we did that, there was no discussion in the board of saying, "Oh, we're gonna create another, another Hamilton Avenue," where there were special rules for people at New Lebanon.
That came out of the magnet programming for New Lebanon, it didn't come out of preschool. So they planned New Lebanon School.
Right, right.
I was not part of that planning. However, when they planned New Lebanon School.
Yes.
They discussed having preschool at New Lebanon School as a part of their magnet.
And Bill Mcursie, then superintendent, came before this board and said, "We're gonna build these classes because it's closer, it will put this closer to the people who need it, who apply in our lottery." But he never said, "I'm gonna create special preference rules for people in that neighborhood, and I'm gonna block out and reduce the number of classes for the townwide program." Now, by the way, you, Mary knows that, you may not have been here when that happened. So that's why it was such a surprise that when this got implemented, there were special rules created for New Lebanon neighborhood students. The board never took that up and never approved it. If you can find a document where that was approved as a matter of policy, or in one of the lottery reviews, I will eat my hat. And I'm not even wearing one, but I'll bring one and I'll eat it.
Again, the New Leb classes were also full-day classes, which we were not aware of until we saw that proposed.
It was part of the proposal.
Mary, we discussed this at our last meeting, please just go back and review your notes. If the board wants to take this up and create special rules and block out the rest of the town, the board can do that, but the board hasn't done that, so you guys shouldn't be implementing that.
All right, is there anything else on the board?
Any other questions?
Can we go to strategy?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so, next up? Next up is the strategic plan update. I guess Mr. Chair will turn to you.
Yeah, quick update, by the way, Michael, thank you very much for publishing this from last night. I wasn't planning on using any documents. Just a couple of updates from the last time we talked. Remember, we talked about surveying the public? We've had a chance to review the survey instruments that were used in the prior plan, there was a survey done by the consultant, it was called PSG, they were from Boston, they surveyed the public. We've talked to some people, parents who are parent volunteers who specialize in the survey, in surveying in real life. And what they've said to us is, if we don't necessarily want to spend any money on this, we can take this survey instrument, and they may help us tweak it a little bit, but it's properly constructed by people who put together surveys and send that out. So when we get the strategy committee together, which I hope to do shortly, we'll try to make a recommendation and decision about that. But if we want to survey the public to get public attitude on certain issues relating to feed information to the strategic plan, the way to do that with saving money would be taking prior survey and just sending it out again. There will be limitations to that, but it's something to consider, and it's a cost-saving move. We also looked at, by the way, there were some interesting questions in the racial balance survey that was done by an organization called the Metis Group for us. By the way, if you haven't ever read the racial balance community survey, it's worth reading, it'll help educate you. So we're gonna, I'm gonna propose that we proceed down that path before we look at hiring another outside firm. The second thing I wanted to tell you is that our meeting that's coming up on March five, in that meeting, we'll be looking at vision and mission. I'm gonna send everybody homework to do, one of the pieces of homework you could do on your own is if you go look at E zero zero zero, which is our policy, it's called mission, vision, goals, and something else, that'll be the back, that'll be what we'll be reviewing and deciding whether we want to keep that as it is or make a change. I can tell you, talking with, I did have a chance to talk with Irene Parisi today about work they've been doing in the curriculum committee redoing. Vision of the graduate, she's not here right now. Very helpful and interesting what they're doing. It totally fits with what we're doing, it's not in collision with it, it's very complimentary. But it's very important for them to build on their work, which is trying to execute vision and mission down in the classroom, that we're really clear, if we're gonna make any adjustments, we should make those adjustments now so that they can continue their work. The last part I would tell you is, we don't yet have a facilitator. For the meeting on the fifth, we might be able to get through it without facilitator, I'd rather not do that. So we're have to solve that issue. But we cannot go through the April two meeting without a facilitator. I've reached out into my business contacts and strategy community to see if somebody will do some pro bono work for us. I'm not, I'm coming up a little dry, the economy's very good, some people are very busy right now. But I had talked to our communications head briefly at our last meeting about potentially sending out a call for volunteers through Parent Link. I have not followed up with her on that, but I'm looking to do that tomorrow or on Monday. That's our one exposure to keep to this schedule. And then the other thing I'm doing is, when Karen gets back from San Francisco, and I have a chance to talk in more detail to Ms. Hirsch, the strategy committee will try to meet with Dr. Jones and flesh out some more details so we keep the process running. That's my update, any questions?
Yes, thank you for the update, Peter. I'm not really.
Go ahead, go ahead, Karen.
So, sure, so, Peter, two things I was gonna say, I circulated some dates on when I can meet next week. And then also, would you mind circulating the racial balance report that you refunded for reading? I know I read it years ago, but if you could recirculate that, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, our board assistant, Mike Antonacci, was kind enough to dig it all up in the archives. Our former head of communications apparently kept a remarkable archives, which was amazing, and we could find everything. Mike Antonacci sent it out to me, I'll just forward it all onto the board. It'll put you to sleep, but it's good reading. I'm sorry.
No, thank you.
Peter, go ahead.
That's all right. So, I guess, when you do schedule the committee meeting, just let the entire board know, because I think, as many of us have either, I think it's helpful to your work. I, I've gotta say, I'm first reflection, I'm not thrilled with the idea of just getting a volunteer facilitator. I like the idea of bringing in somebody that actually knows schools a little bit, or at least knows how to, just sort of do the strategic plan, so I guess, be careful what you get for free.
No, I'm, here's our challenge, Peter, it's a great point, I would much rather have somebody, but, you know, with our budget situation, I don't know how to solve that problem. How do we feel about that? I mean. I mean, my sense from the last meeting, maybe I just read it wrong, was even though this is one of the most important things we'll do, and I, it bothers me a lot, we're trying to do this on the cheap, but at the same time, I am comforted a little bit, like we have a plan to start from, right? But I'm with you, I'd rather have a facilitator. But, you know, we'd have to make some swizzles and choices to be able to do that. What do people think about that?
Ms. Hirsch.
Well, I know I said when we discussed this at our last board meeting or at the retreat, that I know when we first met, and we haven't met since then, and talked about a timeline, I was worried about it being rushed. This is kind of the guiding principle of the work the district is going to do to support our students, and I feel like we really need to do it right. So if we need to change the timeline a little bit so that we do it properly instead of rushing it, I think that that's kind of the key. We have an opportunity to discuss it if we meet even before March fifth, but, you know, and you mentioned talking about people doing surveys and things like that, and reaching out, but I hadn't heard about that. I mean, I know we talked about the idea of it, I didn't know that you had started to possibly reach out.
Were you at the last meeting, we talked about this a little bit?
Yeah, I just didn't know, we did, I just didn't know you had started reaching out, I was, that's all, because we haven't met since then.
Yeah, okay.
That's what I was just saying.
Well, in terms of this, I mean, we could make this decision, we could make the decision that says, "We're not gonna get any money till July one, so this becomes a next-year exercise." You could make that decision, right? I, you know, I don't know that, I mean, that would be a decision to make, right? Because what we would have to do is, you know, if we want to actually fund this, right, do it properly, bring in an outside firm, the earliest that could possibly, well, you can't even do it July one, because you've already got the money all encumbered in July one. So it's a tight budget already, so, I mean, we could talk about that, but that's a kick the can down the road, and I, I'm not adverse to that, we just have to walk into this with our eyes wide open.
Let me just ask, the last time the board did the strategic plan, was there an outside facilitator?
Well, here's what happened, there was an outside facilitator, they ran the surveys, which we can use our survey instrument again, run it, they actually prepared the survey instrument, they brought it back, they were facilitator in the process, and to be fair to them, we actually, after two meetings, two or three meetings, we just dropped them and kicked them out of the process. And what wound up happening is, the strategy committee that was under the leadership at that time of Barbara O'Neill, it wound up being that committee that wound up doing the work and pushing it through on the board, with all. I don't want to say that. We dropped them because they were not very effective.
But what I'm saying is, you're saying that we can take as a starting point what they did, and that is something to build upon, and we as a board can look at it and then make a decision about whether we need a facilitator. I don't think we need to make that decision now with having done very little in the process.
Yes, what I'm saying is, is that the board, eventually the board needs to have discussions, the board needs to do the content, the consultant doesn't do the content. The board needs to have facilitated content that says, "What is your vision and mission?" Right? What is important? They will never do that work, okay? We have to do that work. The question is, is if we're gonna put eight of us in a room to try to wrestle that to the ground to answer that question, do we need somebody like a psychiatrist to help us do that? Okay? Then the next step is, when you say, "Hey, I need to decide what success looks like, and I have strategic goals," right, that's the next one, do we need outside help to help us do that? The last time that we did this, the strategic goal help came from Bill Atia, everybody, some of you may have remembered Bill. In the end, we had to get, push him out the door too, and then it wound up getting solved by the committee with our then-chief innovation officer. So in both cases, we couldn't get there, but I think that was more a failure on who we selected as a consultant than a facilitator than anything else.
Ms. Hirsch.
I just know the last time, when you guys first started it, you guys had a year-long process of the strategic planning committee for the development of all of this, and then it was almost, I don't know, it was nine months at least, to plan it after that? That's. I, that's the only reason why I'm saying, I don't wanna feel like we rushed this, I wanna make sure that we are all comfortable with what we wanna do before we present it publicly, and make sure that we provide enough time for public input.
Karen, I'm all good. The other reason it's that long is because we had never had one in Greenwich ever before, right? By the way, and that's actually a failure, if it takes a board two years to do a strategic plan, I think we have bigger problems. But, as I said, if you wanna push this out, Karen, and I'm okay proposing. If you wanna, if you wanna say, let's not start till July till we can spend money, and let's take the year to do it, I'm okay with that.
No, I don't wanna push it out to July, I'm just saying, I wanna be, I wanna, we need to start the work now, but if it is not ready by June, I wanna make sure that the rest of the board is okay with that. I wanna make sure that we provide enough opportunity for transparency, for input from all the different, you know, we were talking about the different areas of input that we wanted to have. So we just need to be on the same page before we...
So you or Peter or Kathleen, you know, propose something different, I'm good, let's do it, let's do it.
Well, I think the starting point though, Peter, is get your committee together, put your heads together, come up with some options, talk about best path forward. When we get together on March 5th, that's a place for the full board to have that discussion. Hopefully you come in with some ideas that are, that are a little bit baked, we can fully bake them at that time. I worry about the timeline, I've said that every time we've talked about this for the past three months. But I'm okay if it goes beyond June.
I'm okay too.
I think we're on the same page. We need to start this work, this is a process. I don't think it should take two years, I agree with you, it really shouldn't, but we've gotta start somewhere. So I think March 5th is the next point for the full board. Hopefully your committee can get together before then and, you know, leave that discussion. All right, Ms. Stowe.
Yeah, I think that's great. I think that we're getting along so well, Peter, that I don't think we need a facilitator right now. So let's, let's just, maybe Joe can do it. Let's get together on March 5th and let's see how we do, and then if we have to extend the timeline, fine then, but I think it's better maybe to take that conversation until March 5th. If you guys can get together as a committee, like you said, Peter, beforehand, that's great. Otherwise, let's, the eight of us sort of get in a room on March 5th and see what happens.
All right, if there's nothing else on that, we will move on to our action items. The first one being the Central Middle School field options, action items, so Mr. Kelly, did you wanna make the motion?
Oh, sure. I would love to make a motion. After much discussion, much review, and much anticipation by those who have stayed here very late, the suggestion I would like to make is we adopt option number... Get the envelope?
Four.
Four? Four! Four is our motion.
Is there a second to that motion? Ms. Stowe?
No.
Discussion? Mr. Kelly?
Well, yeah, sure, I spoke, well, having been a coach, as you guys know, for many, many years in town, for me, as a coach, it's important to get the kids out on the field. What's something that the, that was not mentioned at all in some of the pre-discussions earlier was that the, the health of the kids, the ability for them to get out on the field and run around, it's very important, and in this, in the climate that we're in right now, I've coached sports that play on practice and play on grass, I've coached sports that they practice and play on turf. In grass, we definitely don't get out as much as we do on turf. We find ourselves struggling to get out, we get canceled due to rain. When it is turf, we get out just about every time, and the kids get a full workout and they, they, one of the programs that I ran, the rugby program, it was, it was really good, because we didn't just take the top athletes, we took kids who were not athletes. We brought them out there, and every day they were part of the whole structural system. And these kids otherwise would be playing Grand Theft Auto, or some sort of video game, or something like that, which, which stopped them from getting out there and running around. And they would take the opportunity, when you do have a cancellation due to rain, to maybe lose interest in the program. So because we need to get the kids out and exercising, and the community is, has mixed views, the community wants grass, well, you know what? Option four has a lot of grass. We have also the opportunity with the turf on option four, to give the school the chance to get out there and play with the field just after rain, or even in rain. So the option, the option four gives us both those options, and I think that's the best one. The board, in my discussions, are mixed, some want grass, some want turf, the community is mixed. I think in this case, we pleased everybody by going with an option that satisfies all the needs.
Ms. Stowe.
I thought long and hard about this, and honestly, the community comments today were really wonderful. I did truly listen to all of them, and it's a passionate issue, and I mean, I go at it from a mom at Central with two more kids coming up at Central. I also have been a coach on Joe's level, but softball. And, and we live in the Northeast, and that's the other reality, is that otherwise, you know, I've been on Central's fields coaching softball, and I've had my son, where was the gym teacher who came out tonight? She was great, because my son has played football on those tennis courts. And it's just not a long-term solution, and I say that with also, like, here we are sitting at Western, I mean, I wanna solve all of these issues if we could, but, what are they saying about a good compromise? Neither party is completely satisfied?
Both happy.
Both happy? Neither satisfied? I'm not sure. But the, to me, we have to make a decision, and I think that this will hopefully, everyone gets a little something here. So I'm also with option four.
Mr. Sher.
I don't know what option four is, obviously you, some of you have been cooking this up for, no, no, I understand, cook, cook up this for, well, it appeared today, it appeared today.
No, Peter, this, this has been posted, this superintendent sent it to us last week, it's been posted.
Okay.
And we asked for this.
Okay, I guess if, the rest of you have sorted it all out, the option four, what is the fill?
Yeah, so if you, if you look at this sheet, it actually says the EnviroFill, which I think is the, the base of what they, they consider. That's what's in the packet.
Where does it say that?
It's on page 14, towards the bottom, I think it's the last line, the last line on page 14 of the PDF. I don't know what the actual page number is, it's like the second to last page before you get to the map at the end.
Hey, Peter, why don't we, why don't we ask Kevin Fusiliere to step up, he's from the Loner McBroom.
Great.
He's the one who is here to explain option four, if need be.
Come on down.
There's a little switch on the mic, you just flip it up.
We didn't realize you were still here.
Can you hear me? All right, thank you for having me up here, Kevin Fusiliere, landscape architect and project manager with my Loner McBroom. Yep, so option four was what came about after our last presentation. We had presented the first three options, which was an all-grass concept, an all-synthetic concept, and then a hybrid, a half-synthetic, half-turf, a half-grass, but that eliminated the baseball diamond, which was not acceptable. Went back to the drawing board and produced option four. The one I have here just looks more like the original renderings in the area or the background. Option four really pushed this synthetic portion as far as we could to the west, and it incorporates enough size to accommodate a softball diamond. So it would have a backstop, it had a full regulation softball field, but then it also accommodates a full natural grass baseball field, with a slightly truncated right field, so left-handed hitters are gonna enjoy this part. But it also gave a large area, about 120,000 square feet of natural grass. Now, that natural grass, as we've discussed, will, is gonna be an engineered natural grass system with under drainage, amendments to the soil, because we know drainage is a major problem here. But by lifting the whole site with both synthetic and the natural grass, we will improve it, and as everyone said, a compromise with surface materials. The infill that we're carrying for the budget is the EnviroFill, that's the coated sand product that's used at Cardinal Stadium. It's not a final decision on the infill, but as far as we are concerned, chrome rubber is not being considered for this. So EnviroFill is a good product, it does sometimes come with an antimicrobial, microbial surfacing, but we know a Cardinal Stadium that was not desired, so that would not be specified as well. So my question was, what would this be if it were organic, an organic fill product? Well, someone had mentioned Hartford's policy, if you look, they say that organic infill is allowed in Hartford fields, and they do specify EnviroFill. Now, I'll be the first to admit, I've never seen green sand, so I don't know how they came about that. No, I was on the, yeah, coconut, the organic. Yeah, the coconut's an interesting one, we've used it in the two facilities that we've designed, Masick High School in Monroe, and then Hampton High School for their second field. It comes with a lot, it comes with added maintenance, it requires irrigation, if it doesn't stay at a certain moisture content, it breaks down very rapidly, and has to be replenished for added cost. And also because it is meant to always be moist, especially in fall and spring, you have freezing issues, so the fields can become very slick. It's, it's a nice product for the right application, it's widely used in Europe on synthetic fields that are primarily used for soccer. But again, you have to just plan on a lot of added maintenance and then irrigating synthetic turf. Yeah, see, I've been on the board long enough that I was, I think there were only two, I don't know if Peter was even on the board, when we did Cardinal Stadium, you know, these debates are like the same debates. I realize for a lot of people it's new, for me it's Groundhog Day, it's like La Cimol. It's, it's the same conversation over and over again. I'm amazed in the six years, six or seven years it's been, it hasn't really changed. This ball field, just educating, I know there's elementary-sized ball fields, then there must be what? Can you tell me the different types? You have the 60-foot diamonds, and that's gonna be in line with the softball-sized field, and then you have 90-foot diamonds, so that's from base to base, so that is a regular... Yeah, I'm talking about youth baseball versus... Right, this would be an appropriate size for middle school and up. This is, you'd be playing on a full-sized field. Is that what's there, is that what's there now? That is correct. So this is the one that's in the outfield, not the one that's next to the... Correct. Okay. Okay. I mean, I don't have any questions or comments, but go ahead, anybody else have a question?
I guess I just wanna ask about the, the system underneath both of them, so there'll be drainage, is it the same drainage system for both?
More or less, the components are a little different, but basically, you, say you build it up, you get the, out of the synthetic turf, we get the topsoil out of there, we shape the subgrade, we put drainage around the perimeter, and then flat drains on the subgrade. So the subgrade's pitched, like you build a golf green with hair and bone drains. Then there's a pretty substantial free-draining stone layer, then there would be a shock pad, because we're talking about an infill other than rubber, so we need something resilient and cushiony. Then you would have the fiber and the infill. Under the grass field, you pull the topsoil aside, you would shape the subgrade, you would put, you could do the flat drains, or you could just do perforated pipe, and you would tie that into an outlet, you'd put a free-draining layer. In this case, it wouldn't be a clean broken stone, like under the turf, because you want something that let the topsoil migrate through it, so it would be a different spec of free-draining material, then your topsoil layer, then sod, preferably, to get on, so your students can get on it.
Ms. Darny. Because it's, this is slightly more expensive than the other combination field, could you just kind of give us a breakdown on those costs?
It's just bigger. We had a lot of wasted space under the other one, that wasn't gonna be improved or, you know, really brought up to the same level. That's it. I'm sorry, I have two other questions.
Great.
The last time we talked about putting in conduit, did you include that in the bid? Yeah, we have a $20,000 line item in there, and the idea was to put, bring, be able to bring conduit from the school at a central location to the, basically 50-yard lines on the turf field, so there'd be vaults in the ground for electrical. And then at least one electrical connection point at each backstop. Okay. My other question is, is, let's say we lay this thing down, and then we need to rip it up and move it someplace else, can you do that, or do you have to throw it away? Well, the interesting thing with the one infill product we're currently talking about... No, I'm sorry about the carpet itself. Yes and no, it's a very difficult, but the infill is, has a 14-year warranty, which is unusual for turf infill, so it's meant to be reclaimed at the... Yeah, you talked about this last time. Yeah, at the end of the turf, so the problem is to reclaim it, you have to cut the turf into manageable strips, shake out the infill into bags. Those strips are very difficult to reassemble, so it is not likely that you would use the same carpet again. Now... You'd have to throw it away. Throw it away. I mean, send it for recycling or whatever. Send it for recycling. Whatever. But you can't reuse it, so once we lay it down, I can't reuse it. It's very difficult, it's just the pieces are too big to manage. The pad underneath, absolutely, that will be reclaimed, reused, the stone will be clean, it can be reclaimed, reused, potentially the piping as well, there's no reason that it should be compromised from installation. So really, we're just talking about the carpet component, which, out of all the system components we mentioned, it's probably the cheapest. It's the infill and the pad that get expensive. Well, the difference between these two projects is two and a half, two and a half versus one and change, right? Uh, yeah. No, it's, yeah, but whatever. Option four is 2.2 million. I'm sorry, grass is a million dollars, right? Grass is a million one. And this thing is two, two, three, so it's a million three difference, right? Right, if I do gra, I mean, it's really, it's, we're talking about one versus four, right? Nobody's talking about two or three anymore? Fair? Right, we're talking about number one versus number four. I mean, Joe's proposed number four as the magic answer, and no, you know, okay, that's what we're talking about? Yeah? True. Okay, so we're talking one versus two, three, correct? And if we change it to, what, what does it do to change the price, forget the maintenance part, if we change it to organic fill, does it increase or lower the cost, or it's the same? The, if we're just talking about the cost, it goes, it's less. EnviroFill's a fairly expensive infill. How much does it save us? Get a ballpark, ballpark. Maybe a dollar a square foot. On the turf field, which is, so $85,000.
You said less than $100,000, right?
But then we'd have to add irrigation. And then he said not maintenance, so... Right, right.
What is the irrigation run, just to be able to do this?
Well, you don't put the irrigation in that... We see it done as a big water reel. Yeah, that's right. So it's about, I think they start around $8,000, but you do need an upgraded irrigation system.
Does that require somebody to actually come and do the watering as a substitute, right?
There's a maintenance component to it. It's not a simple answer, but, you know, so some upgrading, having a strong enough water supply, and then the... That's for the grass. Yeah, I mean, he could, you could put irrigation, I mean, there's, that's a solvable problem, but that's not, it's de min, it's de minimis.
Every dollar is not exactly de minimis when we're talking about this.
When, hey, when you talk about doing grass, and then we talk about another 1.3 million bucks, you know, in the scheme of things, when someone talks to me about $8,000, I mean, let's be, let's get genuine, right? A million, 8,000 bucks, or 10,000 bucks, or 20,000 bucks, on 2.3 million is less than a percent. So let's not, let's not add a bunch of hyperbole to this thing.
But on a per-hour basis, it's actually cheaper.
What's that?
On a per-hour basis, it's cheaper.
Yep. But, they're still gonna have to come out and mow the grass, I mean, let's not kid ourselves with this, I mean, all these crazy arguments, we like kid ourselves about what it really is in terms of money. Okay, Ms. Stowe.
I just wanna know, did we want, since Mr. Kelly's standing asleep, do we wanna hear from him?
Do you wanna come up and add anything?
Anything? Do you like how I have to call Mr. Kelly?
Thank you for the opportunity, it's been a great night, and as you say, first of all, you know, we're so appreciative of the fact that you're taking on this issue right now, because the kids at Central Middle School, the kids of this town really do need a place to play, and I've experienced this as a coach myself, as a principal, and as a father of a seventh-grade daughter who plays field hockey at Central Middle School. So, you know, from our perspective, really ultimately, you heard from my teachers, and I'm here to advocate for what the kids and the teachers need, and they need usable space, and the usual space that will take up the amount of time that we are on it, and knowing the needs of the school come first, my conversations that I've had with people always articulate the fact that our usage gets us to a point where there are some concerns with the grass being able to be maintained and upheld, how much we use it between our PE classes and our extracurricular activities. So that is a concern of mine, that down the road, we will run into the same issue where So that is a concern of mine that down the road, we will run into the same issue where we're challenged to have the appropriate field space. And knowing that the fields in this town are very, very valuable to all of our kids. The newest field is going to be in high demand. We also know we live in the reality of the fact that our kids tend to more now today than before play organized sports that are scheduled through teams on fields. They don't just necessarily go out and play anymore. And those organized sports need rentals and insurance and fields. And so I see this, as much as I love the fact that the conversation is about Central Middle School and that's our primary focus. I know that it's a work, a community field too. My building, I apologize, I don't have the data, but it was rented, I think, the most out of any other building because we are centrally located. So logic and reason would say our fields would be used too, which we're happy to host with the appropriate surface to withstand all of that. So in looking at all of the options out there, I'm in a unique position of having a divided community within my building. But really looking at the needs of my staff and my students. And so a compromise option where we have, I'm one who always enjoys options and choices. And I think it gives us flexibility, I think is wonderful to hear.
Yeah, I have another question. What is in our, what's in our budget now? Someone told me that.
Okay, so I can, I can help you with that, Peter.
Did the selectmen cut our budget?
Yes, the selectmen cut our budget to the one million dollar mark. In our discussions at the BET budget hearing, we let them know that our board had not taken up this item yet. That we would be taking it up tonight. We've sent this document over to them. Once we do vote tonight, we will send that back to the BET Budget Committee. Basically, the response from the BET Budget Committee is we want to know what your board wants to do.
So how does?
Tonight we communicate that to the BET.
I understand, but how does that then get recognized?
The BET is.
So the BET will make that decision?
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay. Can I just say where I am on this issue?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, do you guys have any?
Yep. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Unsurprisingly, I don't mind being the person on the outside, which I can sense I'm already going to be. But, you know, I look at this issue not as grass versus turf. I don't think that's the important issue. And maybe it's because I've been on the board long enough. For those of you who are around during start time, we tried to get a turf field for the school system at Central. But the administration then turned around and said, we don't need it, we don't want it. Okay? For those of us who are on the start time committee, that was, we were trying to help the department director solve their problem. So for me, I, I, I look at this issue maybe a little bit differently than others. I mean, our role is to administer schools and school properties. Our job is not for this board to solve everything for the town. And our role is also to be good fiscal stewards of taxpayer money. And let's call CMS what it is. The issue is not grass versus turf. The issue is, for as long as I've lived in this town, and I have kids now, I have one who's actually out of college now. There's been a swamp behind CMS for decades. Okay, that field sank a long time ago. The issue is drainage. That's, that's the issue. So let's stay focused on, on the issue. I think this idea of whether it's turf versus grass is actually a red herring issue. And we're letting it become the thing that drives everything we're doing here. Our bigger problem also is, no offense folks. The BET, a number of, fifteen years ago or longer, forced us into giving the maintenance of our properties, okay, to the Department of Public Works and Parks and Rec. And the issue we're not dealing with in the room is we're talking about spending an extra one point three million dollars. Okay, think about that, one point three million dollars. Greenskeeper is going to be, or maintenance person is going to be fully burdened in the town five days a week. Eighty grand or a hundred grand or whatever it is. That's thirteen years of a full-time body doing nothing but maintaining grass. So what are we talking about? We're talking about, because they stink at the job that they're supposed to be doing. It's all weeds and grass and fertilizer and they won't maintain it and what have you. We're talking about, let's just go spend an extra one point three million dollars of the taxpayers' money. Here's the other thing that bothers me about this whole subject. For those of you who are new to the board, you might not have been around when we did our facilities master plan. The superintendent actually thinks that it calls for CMS in 2030. She referenced it in a document. Well, actually, that's completely wrong because that document that she's referencing has never been approved by the board. It turns out that our master plan, we were told top priority, fix ADA compliance, which is why we're focused on schools. Add capacity at Greenwich High School, which we now are not going to do because the bubble has moved through. And the other one is, the worst building you have in the entire district is Central Middle School and needs to be replaced. So as a board, our number four priority in our priority list, which was approved by the board, is CMS. Somehow in that document that Tony's referring to, it's somehow number nine. So there's a big disconnect here. So we're about to make a decision to spend two point three million bucks on building something that if we actually followed our master plan and the priorities we set, we're going to be ripping up sooner than we can think. That's not, for me, a very good use of taxpayer money. As I say, I think we have to fix the swamp that's behind Central Middle School. It's, it's crime. It's gone on as long as it has. It bothers me a lot burning up an extra one point three million dollars. The real issue we have in town here, and here's the other thing we should be solving. We now know, and by the way, they're absolutely right, it is a freaking crime that this school that we're sitting at has gone four years with no fields. Finally, we got at our last meeting what that's going to cost to do it and we should do it. And I can tell you where I already am. I don't want to dig up eight feet of dirt and put down grass. It's still going to cost us, I think, fourteen million dollars to go fix this thing in the back. And we're going to turf that. The other thing that needs to happen, which Parks and Rec, I don't want to be solving their problem. The other thing they need to do is they need to go turf all the fields that are sitting over at Eastern Civic Center when they redo Eastern Civic Center. So I'm just worried, I'm not going to lay down in the tracks over this, over grass versus turf, option four. I just think we're so focused on the field and the people who are banging away, sending us things over turf versus grass. We're not thinking holistically about the whole picture. And I think we're making a decision in a vacuum. And it's a lot of taxpayer money to burn, particularly if we're going to wind up ripping it up sooner than we think we are. And I just heard the answer. When you put that stuff down, if you rip it up two years later, you're throwing it away. That's a lot of money to throw away. Can't reuse it on, on creating the fields that I will need to create when and how we rebuild CMS. And candidly, this idea that we're going to wait until 2030 to rebuild CMS? That is, I'm amazed that you guys are with the CMS parents are even laying down and taking that. I, that's just, I can't even imagine that, given the, the shape of that building. It's far and away, we've been told, it's the worst building we have in the district. It should be replaced. It shouldn't be renovated. And we've been told that. So we can stick our heads in the sand about that. I don't think we should be doing that. But somehow this got on the agenda before these other decisions are made. I mean, as I say, I'm not going to lay down in the tracks over it, but I think, you know, it's a lot of taxpayer money to be burning on this thing. And the real problem is in Parks and Rec, it's not with the board.
Yes, Dr. Jones.
Yeah, I, I mean, I do just want to comment. I do believe that staff and Park and Rec do have a good relationship and we work well together. And we literally met on this last week. And one of the big concerns, and I know our director had to leave, but in going with all grass is that even with a keeper full time, if we're going to go over twenty five hours, which just the school alone would do. So we're going to invest a million dollars and then be telling the community, oh, by the way, you can't use it. And the reality is, keeping people off of it is probably going to be a challenge. So it's going to, it's, you're going to have a million dollars you've invested that's probably going to look like a mess by the end of the year. And we actually, as we're even calculating, the practice time and PE time are slightly above twenty five hours. Which, you know, we realized that. So I think that's one thing. And I, again, I just want to reiterate, it's not about somebody not being able to keep it up. It's just the hours that could be on the field. Now, the other thing I will say is that I do, you know, look at the master plan. That's how we plan for the budget and for those priorities. And they're laid out, you know, on that grid as far as the years. Central is in, is in that master plan for 2030.
Tony, that document has never been approved for the board. So if you're using it, if you're using it, you shouldn't be using it.
All I can say is that I, well, I guess, and maybe that's a discussion for the board later on. But I, I do know that from a majority of the board, the feeling is that the board voted on the priorities and then that document was put together. And that's, as we're planning for the budget, we would be looking at that in 2030. And right now with option four, it is still grass up against the building, which is what KGND showed, which I think was what some people were referencing. So whether it's the grass we have now that really doesn't drain at all, or the new grass, whether that's five years, ten years, fifteen years, it's still grass. And that is an adjustment that was made from the last meeting where it had the turf closest to the building, which would have made that decision point much more difficult.
I guess a couple of things. One, the start time issue, Peter, about Central was they, the football team didn't want to use Central because it was grass. They actually wanted turf. We did not have a turf option at the time. The master plan absolutely was about prioritization. We basically were given a bunch of options. We voted on the prioritization. We talked about the factors that we would use to prioritize and that was the direction we went in. If you look at where we are today against that original timeframe, we had anticipated doing some work, getting started on Old Greenwich and Riverside. We requested that money last year. BET took it out of the budget. We requested it again this year. We'll see if we, we get it for Old Greenwich. So if you want the board to vote at some point to absolutely settle on this as your plan and locking us in to request that money every year, year in, year out, you have every right to add it to the agenda. I won't vote for it because I don't think it makes any sense to lock us into that priorities change. You know, for, for me, Central was about the useful life of the building. You know, we know what the timeframe is on replacing the building. I, I can't see going out any further. If there's a reason to move it forward, that's a discussion we can have at the right time. But, but at this point.
Peter, Peter, we.
I've got the floor, Peter. When I'm done, I'm going to recognize other members. We will get back to you. I will tell you why I support option four. You know, it, it does give us the most flexibility in terms of the field use. There's drainage for both. We want to see if actually drainage on a grass field is going to work. If we commit to it and at the end of the year, it didn't work, we're right back where we were. Basically, we've got a field of mud. I worry about, we spent a lot of time last year about Parks and Rec's ability to actually do the work that was sent to them. It's twenty years. It actually is twenty years ago. We, as the superintendent last year, Mr. May, I spent a lot of time trying to work through with Parks and Rec, changing their service levels. And basically got stonewalled at the very end of the year because they knew the clock was running out. It went nowhere. Out of the twenty-two positions that were sent over to Parks and Rec, two were left on their table of organization at this point. They basically used it as their cut every year, the positions that serve the field. The fields that are best, that the schools are, that the schools have that are maintained by Parks and Rec are the ones they rent out. Go look at Julian Curtis. It's a prime example. There's two baseball diamonds there. There's the one for the, for the students and there's the one they use for renting out. The renting out one is pristine. The one for the students has the grass, has the weed infill. You'll see it, it's there. I, I really believe that this is the best option on the table at this point. It gives us the ability to see how both function. It gives us the ability to have the full-sized baseball field, baseball alley, quite on grass. I always say in baseball stadiums, I had turf. I think it's crazy. This will give us an opportunity to do it. When I look at, when we tear the building down, this still leaves the flexibility of moving the building. The KGND drawing that people have been sending around, it's a concept. It's not actually a plan. It's not. Nothing is final. And what I, what I learned from serving on the new lead committee is you start with some, you start with an idea and you end up somewhere completely different. When we started the new lead project, we thought that building was going to be on the field. It's, it's in a place nobody thought it would be. So I, I'm not locking us in. I don't think this locks us into anything. I just think it's the best compromise that's available. It allows for community use. I do not want to put a gate up around a school and tell the community, I'm sorry, you can't step on this field because it's, it's resting right now. I don't think that makes any sense.
Sure, so, look, I, option four certainly seems like a compromise, but I think we're, we're just selling a couple of issues very short in the sense that, one, you, the whole concept here is, yeah, it's been a mud pit and it's sunk. But we haven't even given it an opportunity to see if it, on the drainage component, that may solve all things. And I think we're comparing apples to oranges because there's no other grass than Greenwich that has these drainage components that we're trying, that we would implement here for putting that in. Secondly, I think, you know, we are going to eventually build, build on a new school. And I, I do think it is a concept of a waste of taxpayer dollars. And that whole idea of putting around a fence, if you look at the high school fields or any of the other fields that have turf in our town, they also have fences. Because you're not allowed to go in and around them and you're not allowed to bring turnip seeds and you're not allowed to bring your dog. So the fact is that, you know, you're putting a fence on, so all of the fields in town have fences. And I also think that we're doing a disservice by ourselves by taking, you know, under, you know, block Holy Grail that for some reason, the twenty to twenty-five, you know, the twenty to twenty-five hours on the field is, it's the maximum because the only people saying that are the people that are putting forward this proposal. Because if you, if you just do a simple Google search or another, read other studies that have done this, that is not the number of hours that they are putting forward with respect to the fields that can be used. Furthermore, the field is ginormous. The field can be used in a multitude of ways on, and certain practices don't have to occur. It's twenty-five hours across the whole thing. It's enormous. So I think that we're also looking at ourselves as a disservice that somehow we're going to be spending twenty-five hours on a small portion of this and the rest of it can't be, then that renders the entire property shut down. This is not true. We need to look at this, we, we need to look at this field from a holistic point of view. And look, I understand and appreciate all of the, the health concerns. And there are two schools of thought I have, right? And, you know, we could talk all day until the end of that comes true. But at the end of the day, you're, you're talking about eleven, twelve, thirteen-year-old kids on, playing on grass fields. And there's no doubt about, without any study, that in fact, it's just healthier on growing kids to play on natural grass. It is less obstructive to their joints, to their growing bodies, to their joints, playing aside, breathing in toxic air, which I, I can't say one way or the other. But natural grass is the way to go here with respect to just young kids. We're not talking about, and from a competitive advantage point of view, look, I understand that argument as well. But kids that are playing on a competitive advantage, they're doing other things and their parents are making those decisions for them to do that. We're talking about our, our middle school kids that are playing, having PE and playing kickball and soccer and lacrosse and everything else that's going on out there. That's what we need to be focused on. And, and I think we're just missing the boat on, on it otherwise. It, it should be natural grass. That's the way it should be. And I, that's my position.
To me, I, you know, the primary, our role is for the schools. And the school is telling us that they need a playable field. And for me, that's kind of the driving force in the decision to support this option. Now, I don't think we should turf the whole thing, but I think we have to have an element of the field that the PE department has the assurance can be used on a regular basis. And I think it's nice to be able to also have. And I think it's nice to be able to also have a grass portion as an option and to preserve a full-size baseball field. But I do think, taking it back to what our job is, is our job is about the schools, not about all the other organizations. And the school personnel have repeatedly said to us, we need a playable outside area. And I think we, we should bear that in mind in making a decision.
I tend to add to that, I, I'm sorry.
Karen, hang on, we gotta get, like, hold on.
Sorry. Karen, go ahead.
Christine, I completely agree with you. We need to give them a playable field. And that's exactly what I think we can give them with respect to grass. Because again, to the point, nobody put drainage under that field. And if you provide the adequate drainage for that field, they're going to be able to play on it after it rains because it will have drained. And, you, no one's saying that they're going out in the rain, because I can't tell you how many times they're not, they're not sending kids out to go have PE when it's raining outside. It's the fact that it's after the rain. And all of this is, with respect to the studies that have been done, and the drainage system that's going to be put in, you can play on it after it rains. And unless, you know, the school is telling us that they're gonna send kids out for PE in the rain, then that's a different issue. But I'm not hearing you saying that. I think that giving them the proper drainage on a grass field gives them the playable field that they need.
Ms. Wilson.
Okay, thanks. And I appreciate, I know what it's like to be on the phone, so I appreciate that Mr. Bernstein leaves time for the first on telephone. Um, no, I'm, I'm, I'm where a lot of you are, and I, I'm where kind of what, what Ms. Downey just said makes a lot of sense. I think that, um, you know, it's for the schools, we listen to the school administration. We need to be realistic in terms of the feasibility of where we live in the Northeast, um, to be able to use the fields. I also, and I, I, I think it made a lot of sense that we moved where the grass was versus the turf, and that we expanded to a full-size baseball field of grass. So I, I mean, so I think that, you know, I think that we voiced a lot of concerns along the way, and we've, hopefully, I mean, it's always a process, right? But we've hopefully sidetracked some of those pitfalls, um, by thinking about this strategically. And I know we've all spent a lot of time, um, reading through this and sort of opining over this decision, because no, you know, we want what's best for the health and wellness for our children, meaning playing outside and getting in their exercise and getting in movement, and that, that may require some turf. Having the option of natural grass, um, you know, an entire baseball field full size for, you know, kids to be able to, um, be out and enjoy the grass and, and play and, and, um, I think we, a lot of us here are both sides, and a lot of us here, the, um, are able to understand both sides. And, and for that reason, I think this is the best of the options.
Ms. Hirsch.
I, I don't know, I've, I've been struggling with this for quite some time and have gone back and forth, and my original thought was, you know, we need more usable playing fields, you know, we need more turf fields. We only had one in town that was consistently booked. Having listened to all of the speakers in, you know, the past couple of months, also thinking, and hearing some of the discussions, I was moved to, to say, no, I think we need all natural grass. Um, yeah, and having heard from our school staff and PE and knowing that we have a curriculum that requires athletics for, and it's part of our athle-, you know, graduation requirements, students need to be out and physically moving. Um, I don't know, in my house, we hold to call, we call it the wiggle fidgets or the ya-yas, they gotta get them out during the school day. Um, I, I've been going back and forth. We have a requirement and responsibility to give our students what they need to meet the demands of our curriculum and to be physically active. And we also have requirements to be good neighbors. Um, and like Mr. Bernstein said, I think, unfortunately, I, I think, you know, the best option is, is, is 50/50, uh, I guess option four. We have the opportunity to not lock out the neighbors, um, they will be able to use the field. All right, the students have the option and will consistently be able to use natural grass playing fields there. They don't have to be on the turf unless it's, I mean, I, I have a child at Western who's not had an option to have any sort of field for three years, and the one that was here prior to that only had a year and a change on, on the fields here. So I, I struggle with this discussion to begin with. I think every child needs to have an option of playing fields. Um, and I think, I've watched my daughter slide through the mud pits at Central a week after it had rained. I watched girls in field hockey falling into holes on that field that were, you know, a week old from, from mud. I mean, I have the photos of them doing mudslides. Um, I should say sliding through the mud, not mudslides, because, you know, but, um, totally different thing. At this hour of the night, though, mudslides sounds good. Um, I've really struggled with this, and I, and I feel it's our responsibility, like I said, to, to support our students in what they need, support our staff in what they need for, to give our students the best curriculum options, but also allow our neighbors to, to, to know that we're doing this in good faith. If we put in, you know, if, in 10 years, we need to replace the school, which we do, 10 years down the road, this carpet will be process, in the process of being removed anyway, probably. So it's not really, it's not really a concern for me because we will still have that option to make, to make changes to the, to the layout. But I've been struggling with this for a really long time and listening to pros and cons on this side, so.
Mr. Sherrod.
Look, I'm gonna, I, as I say, I mean, I can, I already know how this vote's gonna go, and I'm not gonna lay down in the tracks. I also know, look, there's five board members here whose kids either were at Central, are gonna be at Central, or what have you. So I realize for at least five of you, this is a, um, personal, you have a personal connection to this issue. And look, I know what it is. I, my kids went to school in the eastern zone, so if, if some other board member starts talking to me about, about eastern middle school, I will tell you, Christine and I are gonna have a very different view on that than someone who doesn't. It's like me opining on Western. I, my kids don't go here. So I understand for some of you, this has got an extra closer dimension to it. For me, it's a lot more, uh, clinical, and, um, you know, I, I'm not willing to lay down in the tracks on this. I don't think this is, as I said, the greatest use of, of, of taxpayer money. Um, and as I say, I mean, I'm amazed. Some of the people who've been texting me saying, oh, came out of the woodwork, by the way, never been here before, but now all of a sudden they're up on, 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 turf. They're texting me like crazy, vote for turf, you really gotta support turf, and it's like, I'm getting bombarded. Uh, these are the same people who, when we were in the middle of start time and what have you, or in other issues, they're the same people who will then tell me, what's the big deal about you guys over at that board event? I went to, fill in the blank on the school, I played outside on grass and turf, it was all great and what have you. I think we gotta be careful we don't overthink this stuff. As I say, I mean, I won't vote no. I'm gonna vote yes, I'll just let you guys do the thing. The one thing we do have to do, though, is we have got to stop misrepresenting to the public about our master plan. We said it, CMS is number four. You go look at the project schedule that Tony's referencing, it's project number nine. Okay? Those two things can't be reconciled. So, yes, if we want to make it project number nine, we need to take that item up from the board and we need to vote for it, and all eight people here need to put their money where their mouth is. To keep representing plans to the public, letting the public believe it's in alignment with our master plan, when it isn't, we, I don't want to keep lying to the public. We gotta stop doing it because it makes us lose credibility when we go to the B E T. So, Peter, if you want to make it project number nine and override what the board took up, I hope you as the chair will put that on the agenda and bring the issue to the board.
Peter, I'm gonna say the same thing I said earlier. If you want it on the agenda, ask for it during agenda planning. You have every opportunity to do so and have that discussion.
We need to stop lying to the public.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? If not, I'm going to call a question. All those in favor of option four? Karen? All those opposed?
Karen, which way are you?
Okay. And Mr. Sherrod, you're abstaining, so it passes by a vote of 611. Thank you very much. All right, with that, we're gonna move on to our next action item, which is the GHS new course proposals for yoga mindfulness and stress management, which I feel like I need, and honors advanced, uh, topic, computer science. Is there a motion to accept the course proposals? Is there a motion to accept the course proposals? Ms. Hirsch?
I'll make the motion to accept the course proposals as presented.
Ms. Downey is the second. Is there any discussion on the course proposals? Ms. Dow.
Okay, I'm just gonna ask one question, Tony. We talked about how we had to put a freeze on our financials here at whatever, on the year, February in the year, and we're talking about adding two new courses I recognize to the budget next year, but is this something that's concerning you given? Are we worried about adding this, basically?
No, because it's existing staff. We're not adding staff to do it. So that means in order to add a course, you're not teaching something else.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of accepting the new course proposals for yoga mindfulness and stress management and honors advanced topic, computer science?
Only if I can take these terms mentioned.
All right, uh, Peter, are you, yes? Karen, are you, are you a yes on that?
Yes.
Thank you very much. That passes eight zero. All right, next up, policy governance. Ms. Dow, it's up to you to make some motions here.
I'd like to make a motion. Do I have to read the policies? No, right? Thank you. To approve the policies as presented.
On the...
On the, I think, wait, on the cover sheet.
All right, is there a second? Ms. Hirsch, discussion?
Yeah. Okay, um, I...
Hang on, uh...
Yeah, Karen, I'm gonna bring up your point.
Kathleen's just gonna introduce it.
So, um, I get, I received, first of all, policies 11, these three policies right here, don't make me say them. Four policies have been revised, and I managed to, thank you, Michael, to redline them, so you'll see what they are. Um, 11, 10.12. Christina Downey was good enough to point out that we have to add an S to guardians at the top of the second page, so that's one modification. Um, so we'd like to make that. Otherwise, that was the big difference in that policy. And 2100, this is actually something that we had talked about at the prior board meeting, it just hadn't been added, um, because this is how it's done, is that the superintendent will be responsible for developing a district staffing plan, and she'll review it with the board annually as part of the budget planning. It's obviously not done beforehand, it's part of it. Um, 2131, um, there was a, a revision that, um, we decided at the policy committee, um, in curriculum programming, that the superintendent will assist the board by setting curriculum and program priorities, and will inform the board of any substantial revisions to the curriculum. That is a change that I think is well worth noting. And then lastly, Karen Kwolski, I'm sorry, I need to get back to you, um, but she was pointing out that in 2131, in the last paragraph, we should also add guardians to this paragraph to be consistent with the prior policies. And I agree with that, so I'm happy to sort of make that modification as well.
Any further discussion? Karen, I don't know if you heard, Kathleen said she'd make her change.
Yes, no, that was, that was my, I thought that we needed that for consistency purposes, but since it's being addressed, and I have nothing further, thank you.
Right. Any other discussion on these policies? All right, hearing then, all those in favor of adopting policies as presented on the cover sheet? Karen? All right, so those policies pass eight zero. Thank you to PGC for continuing to move this process forward. I see the light at the end of this tunnel. All right, next up, the financial and staffing report. Mr. O'Keefe, I, I'm sure there's not a lot of good news here.
No, not really. Yes, there is. Uh, I'll make it quick.
Please.
Uh, as far as the general fund goes, uh, as you know, a month ago, we were staring at a potential $1.2 million exposure. Uh, since that time, and as reported and forecast, uh, in this package, is some identified savings of 40 to 25,000. So our exposure is down to current point 775. And since this was posted on Friday, we've also identified an additional savings that were working. Plus, as you heard, uh, already mentioned this evening, uh, we implemented yesterday a partial freeze on spending that will also help us to, uh, reduce the, uh, potential exposure, uh, further, hopefully down to zero. As far as capital goes, uh, as you know, we've been closing out projects. We've closed out all of the old projects, 15, 16, 17, and have been reducing the 18, 19, 20, um, projects. Uh, since we last reported, uh, this, our, our available balance has decreased an additional 900,000 to 25.4 million. And that was, as I said, posted, uh, last Friday, and I checked again today, and since, since a week later, we're, we're down another, uh, 700,000. So we're making a lot of headway on, on capital projects as well. If you look at the, um, if you look at what we've done, um, since, as I said, since January 31st, we're down 900,000, uh, and then an additional 700,000 today. And you look at what we've accomplished since December 4th, we've actually, uh, reduced our, uh, outstanding balance by 6.3 million. So a lot of, a lot of work there. Uh, just, uh, last couple of items, food services continuing to forecasted budget. Um, and we do have, uh, two transfers, one of which is announcement only. It's a $25,000, uh, transfer within language arts for literate programming. Uh, the second one does require a board of ed approval, and it is a, a number of items that contributed to the, to the, uh, action to reduce the, uh, potential exposure. It's a number of, uh, salary savings from attrition in frozen positions, uh, and transferring that amount to, uh, outplays tuition in the amount of 276,226. So I'll need a motion on that.
All right, first one, we get a motion on the financial and staffing report. Ms. Downey moves that. Is there a second? Mr. Kelly, thank you. Um, let's do our discussion on that first. So again, I commend you on, on continuing to win or down the, uh, the capital. You guys have made amazing progress. I think Dan has gone home, please thank him again. All right, other questions on, uh, on the financial and staffing report?
Um, transfers.
Yeah, we'll get to the transfers. All right, so there are no questions on the financial and staffing, uh, so motion on the table to accept that. All those in favor? Karen?
Karen?
All right, that passes eight zero. Thank you. All right, can we get a motion on the transfers? Move by Ms. Downey, seconded by Mr. Bernstein. Hey, look, I did something about that. All right, discussion, Ms. Downey.
Sean, I, I applaud your efforts to try to find the money. My concern is kind of where we're taking these salaries out of. So I don't know if you could give us a little more detail without, you know, getting bogged down, but to find 276,000, what are we cutting?
We're talking about the HR director job, or the assistant HR director job that, uh, was, was on hold, and we've now decided not to replace that position for this year and next year. And there's another...
Which position?
The...
Assistant HR. Tremaine's old job.
Tremaine's old job, right. There's also, there's also a, uh, there's also an assistant at, uh, central office, uh, person left, I believe, in December. Retired in December, and we're not replacing her. And, uh, and then there was also in the business office, there was $22,000 planned for additional help, and, uh, we're not gonna spend that money.
There's also stuff for school libraries. What were those reductions? There's like three of those for part-time and regular salaries of...
Those are actually, um, support positions in the library that are frozen right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on that item? I'm always extremely uncomfortable when I start grading ones to make this up, uh, but I'm gonna hold my nose on this one. Any, anything else? All right, with that, all those in favor of accepting the transfers? Karen? All right, eight zero. Thank you. All right, we're on agenda planning, so, um, I believe we're gonna add the new level on certificate of occupancy to our April meeting. So fingers, fingers crossed, we'll have that in hand.
Well, they actually reduced it in March and then switched to April, just to say...
Oh, we, we originally wanted to say January, so, uh, we're April.
Shermane's old job, right. There's also, there's also a, there's also an assistant at central office, person who left, I believe, in December. Retired in December, and we're not replacing her. And then there was also in the business office, there was $22,000 planned for additional help, and we're not going to spend that money.
There's also stuff for school libraries. What were those reductions? There's like three of those for part-time and regular salaries of...
Those are actually support positions in the library that are frozen right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion on that item? I'm always extremely uncomfortable when I start grading ones to make this up, but I'm going to hold my nose on this one. I mean, anything else? All right. With that, all those in favor of accepting the transfers? Karen?
Karen?
All right. That passes 8-0. Thank you. All right. Can we get a motion on the transfers?